Cold order, regular meeting. Goodyear City Council, 10 July 2006. Ask if Councilmember Scott would lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 Heavenly Father, we ask you to guide this elected body to make the best decisions for our community. We also ask you to look after our city staff as they go about their daily chores and to offer the same protection for our armed forces wherever they may be. And for all of you in the group, I ask you to say an extra prayer for Lee Olman, the father of Mike Olman, one of our firemen, and for Tom Robinson, the husband of Lois Robinson. For this and all else, we thank you.
Amen. All council members are in attendance. We do not have any minutes for this evening. We have no expenditures to ratify or approve. It's now open to communications and we'll start with any commendations by this body or anyone from the public who would like to commend someone for an act. Okay, now we'll move to council member's report on current events. Would any council member? Councilmember Souza, current event, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I had the pleasure of attending the patriotic service at Skyway Church on July 2nd. It was a very moving and very impressive ceremony, especially for one that wasn't in the during World War II. Thank Pastor Greg for the nice little note that he sent me. And I'll probably see him again. The Lord willing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I too thank you. I too attended that same service, but at different time than you did. It was at the 10:30 service. And even if you do not belong to that church, if you want to really get that great American feeling that says, "God bless America," and how lucky we are to be able to walk on this earth that we share. So you don't have to belong to that church, but I recommend next year for any of you to go to that service. And I'm pleased to say that my husband and I graduated from the Police Citizen Academy on June 27th. And I just want to commend the class coordinators, Sergeant Anna Ivara and Sherry Giza from our police department for their contributions to the development of citizens' awareness and understanding the role in law enforcement. And how you know how effective it is, is at the last night, when it's graduation night, and people are bringing, they brought their children, their aunts and uncles, their grandmas and grandmas, grandpas, and they were just so excited. And so it's just such a great contribution to our community. The other thing I attended on June 29th, I attended Mayor Gordon's Design Downtown in Phoenix, the Urban Forum Project. And Mayor, I think you touched on that at the last meeting, that you talked about wanting to know more about that. And their consultant did speak about that. It was interesting, because she held the zoning book up and she said, "That goes away." And she held up a few pieces of paper and said, "That's what replaces it." So it'll be interesting to find out all that information. The other thing, we had our last technical advisory committee meeting for the city center on July 6th. It was, I think, most successful. We had some concerns by the citizens, but I think we've taken care of that. And we'll be presenting that July 19th to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then it will come before us, the council, in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holland?
I spent another day at the wastewater plant, becoming my favorite hangout. And they arranged for me to go on a helicopter and tour these areas on the project. So I'm really looking forward to that. We go this coming week, and so that'll be very, very exciting. Again, thanks to the folks that would manage to pull that together.
Okay, just a couple of quick ones for me. Compliments to the staff for the 4th of July celebration. That was very impressive, actually. Our first one at the park.
It was.
Echo that. And Rob Antoniak and I were at a meeting with Lipsco and the Arizona Corporate Commission. Sean was there and Jim Nichols was there. And we're there because, as most people know, there has been a smell emitting from that plant on McDowell and near Bullard. And that was the purpose of the meeting. Let's discuss this, let's see what we can do about it. And they are moving in the right direction. We think that it's being resolved. The reason I bring it up is because I really want to offer thanks to Commissioner Chris Mays, who I didn't know before this meeting. She was strong, she was tough, and she will make this company produce a good operation for all of us. So I was really impressed with that. And to the staff, if we have further problems, I think we go right to ACC and let them work it. This is their jurisdiction, and that's where the problems can be resolved. So that was good news. And then this morning, we had our monthly Southwest Valley Mayor's get-together, where we have a little breakfast. And it was four of us, usually there's five. We agreed that the city manager for the city of Towson will approach his colleagues and will try to come up with an area plan to combat graffiti in the Southwest Valley, which is becoming an increasing problem. So obviously, you don't want to do it as a single city, you want to do it as an area. And that, I think we're going to move in that direction. I hope we are, anyway. We also talked about having a hospitality center at the League of Cities, which we used to do in the past. It's a good way for council members who don't see other council members to get to meet and know one another. So that's good. But also, I think we want to move in the direction of starting to lobby now for the Wigwam to be the host in 2008 or '09, so that we can bring the League of Cities convention out to this part of the world. And lastly, on the League of Cities, I would like to, if I could formally ask Councilmember Souza if you'd represent the city of Goodyear and carry the flag at the League of Cities in August.
Thank you for your honor. Appreciate it.
You agree?
I agree.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Mayor, one more thing. You're officially now chairman of MAG.
Right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For bringing such an honor to the city of Goodyear.
Oh, thank you, sir. Do we have any manager summary of current events?
Yes, sir. One item. As you know, we are in the midst of our marketing campaign to introduce our new sanitation service to our residents. I'd like to take a minute to familiarize you with a unique key marketing element that we're going to be using to help educate the public about our new recycling program. We will be using this marketing tool at our neighborhood block parties, school assemblies, and at the October Gain Event. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Kirby and the Collectors.
Hey, Chris. Chris. Have everybody introduce themselves. Have everyone introduce themselves. Everybody.
(Laughter) Yes, yes, you go. Come on. They have to know the perpetrators of this.
Oh, no.
Want everybody to know who you are. Okay.
Ladies?
Linda Maynor.
Kathy Ozian, my master.
Ron T. Fire.
Mike Nassar.
Arcadio Patricio Pesado Villa Jr.
Carlos Vayas, sanitation.
Christopher N. Ritz.
(Laughter)
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 Carlos Vayas, sanitation.
Christopher N. Ritz.
(Laughter)
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 Carlos Vayas, sanitation.
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 (Laughter)
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 Are you cutting CD on this?
Uh, what, November? Maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this group will have a four-song repertoire with familiar tunes and trashy lyrics. They perform in the future.
Very good. Very good. Well, we look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. (Applause)
Mayor, I got to say, kudos for embracing change. I mean, that's amazing. This is a great, it'll be a great tool in the schools if they use it. It is. Kirby. Very good. (Inaudible) You finished, Mr. Glenn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to seven on our agenda, and that is opportunity for any citizen, anyone from the public, to make a comment on any subject that is not on this evening's agenda. Would anyone like to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Glow O'Donnell.
Okay, Glow.
(Inaudible) 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 Mayor Kavanaugh and city council members, I'm Glow O'Donnell from the Southwest Lending Closet, led by Brenda Holland this year. Anyway, I've come to say thank you to your council for considering us for the grant that you are giving us this year, and we certainly thank you for your support. We need every penny of it. I can't do events. I do want you to know that I've given you the new brochure. It's on your desk. I have one also in Spanish, but I couldn't read it, so I left it at home. No, we have lots of Spanish clients, and so we have put our brochure also into Spanish. One little girl from the college has helped us do that. I also want to thank Dick Souza, you didn't know I was going to say that?
I know.
For coming to the appreciation party. We certainly thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
And Bill Arnold would be here to thank you too, if he could.
Thank you for the pleasure.
Anyway, we do thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
We thank you for becoming the MAG leader. I'm sure you'll do a great job. And also, I have some printouts, and I also say to the council and to you that I hope that you have complete success in your college and/or university selections. Thank you very much for your partnership. No woman is finished until she sings. No, I'm not going to sing. I want you to know that there was a mistake in the Chamber of Commerce bylines that was passed out this year, this month. The breakfast, they say, was on July 13th. No, 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 no. It's going to be July 20th. They don't have a mixer and a breakfast on the same day. So please put it on your mind and come to the breakfast at 7 o'clock at the Estrella Mountain Community College. It's always very good. The speaker is going to be the same, as said on the bylines. But also, if you can't make that, do come to the business mixer. That is on the 13th. And with that, I will just say thank you once again from the Southwest Lending Closet and from me. Any questions? Nobody ever asks me anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Glow, for all you do for the city. And for your community.
Thank you very much. (Applause) Oh, Dave, I forgot one big thing. I also want to wish Frank Kavanaugh a very nice vacation.
Enough said. Other comments from the public, again on a non-agenda item. Okay, we're going to move to consent, but before I do that, I just noticed that Sue Linney's in the audience. Sue is a previous council person, and we certainly miss you here, Sue. Welcome to the meeting. Okay, well, now I'll move to consent, and I'll ask the clerk if she would read the items. There's quite a few of them, so sit back and relax. Read them by title only, please.
Item A, A. Council will consider awarding a contract in the amount of $168,826 to HDR, SR, Beard and Associates for Planning, Engineering, Architectural, and Project Management Services for the new park and ride facility in Goodyear. B, Council will consider awarding a contract in the amount of $416,675 to Oradon Construction Services to provide management services for the improvement of Van Buren Street from (Inaudible). Item C, Council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1054 authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Superior Court of Arizona, Maricopa County, for jury services. D, Council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1055 authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the (Inaudible) Maricopa County construction management ownership of flood control structures within the Gila River associated with the Cotton Lane Bridge project. Item E, Council will consider reappointing members to pick board the IPA Board by appointing or reappointing Gary Brooks to Goodyear Industrial Development Board for a six-year term expiring May 31st, 2011. Reappointing Sherlyn Holman to Goodyear Industrial Development Board for a six-year term expiring May 31st, 2011. Reappointing Gene Shelton to the Public Improvement Corporation Board for a three-year term expiring May 31st, 2009. Reappointing Chris Hagan to the Public Improvement Corporation Board for a three-year term expiring May 31st, 2009. Council will consider adopting Resolution 06-1056 approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Glendale, the city of Avondale, the town of Buckeye, the city of El Mirage, the city of Goodyear, the city of Peoria, and the city of Surprise, the city of Towson, and the town of Wickenburg, and the town of Youngtown, to establish and participate in the West Valley Police Coalition to cooperatively provide law enforcement, security services at Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority Stadium Events, and authorizing the city manager and chief of police to execute the intergovernmental agreement and to take all steps necessary to carry out the purpose of the resolution and the IGA. Item G, Council will accept the dedication of a sewer line easement and temporary construction easement and approve a license agreement between the city and the Western Area Power Administration to be used for construction of a section of the Cotton Lane, Elwood Street sewer trunk line, which is generally located along the south side of Elwood Street between Cotton Lane and Cerro Avenue. H, Council will consider accepting the dedication of a water and sewer line easement generally located along 183rd Avenue between Harrison Street and Yuma Road. Item I, Council will consider adopting Resolution 06-1057 authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona for participation in the statewide terrorism liaison officer program, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Item J, Council will consider approving the dedication of a temporary construction easement, which is generally located north of and adjacent to the Van Buren Street right-of-way between Litchfield Road and Bullard Avenue. Item K, Council will consider accepting the dedication of sewer line easement and temporary construction easement and approve a license agreement for construction of the Cotton Lane and Elwood Street sewer trunk line and approve entering into an easement agreement with the Western Area Power Administration for the purpose of constructing a section of the Cotton Lane, Elwood Sewer Street trunk line, which is generally located along the 159th Avenue alignment between Elwood Street and the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way. L, Council will consider accepting a 20-foot-wide water easement from Safeway Incorporated on the west side of the Safeway Drainage Retention Basin, generally located at the northwest corner of Van Buren and Estrella Parkway. Item M, Council will consider approving the final plat for Travis Park at Canyon Trails, Parcel 3M, subdividing 58.19 acres into 199 single-family lots, generally located at the northwest corner of 158th Avenue and Van Buren Street, and on the east side of 158th Avenue, approximately 850 feet north of Van Buren Street, within the Canyon Trails planned area development subject to stipulations. Item N, Council will consider awarding a contract to Burgess and Nyckel Incorporated for a contract amount not to exceed $323,060 for groundwater modeling and engineering support services relating to the Arizona Department of Water Resources Assured Water Supply Designation, and to provide a tool which may be used to assess groundwater availability and the possible effects of various proposed water management strategies on the aquifer system as set forth in the agreement attachments, and authorize the city manager to execute all documents. Item O, Council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1058 declaring certain drainage easement to be unnecessary for public purposes and vacating certain drainage easement. Item P, Council will consider adopting Ordinance 06-1017 amending Policy 200 Employee Compensation and Policy 600 Attendance and Leave as an amendment to the City of Goodyear Policy and Administrative Guidelines Manual of 02-01-2004. Council will consider adopting Resolution 06-1059 declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled Policy Number 200 Employee Compensation and Policy Number 600 Attendance and Leave. Item Q, Council will consider accepting the map of dedication for a segment of Cotton Lane located within the King Ranch development south of the Gila River. Item R, Council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1060 declaring a certain public right-of-way to be unnecessary for public purposes and vacating a certain public right-of-way. Item S, Council will consider accepting the dedication of rights-of-way and easements along a section of Cotton Lane, generally located between Maricopa County Road 85 and the Gila River, generally located east and west of the Cotton Lane intersection. Item T, Council will consider approving a request from Glenn Edmondson, representing Albertson's LLC, for a person transfer Series 9 liquor license for Albertson's number 976 located at 409 North Litchfield Road. Item O, Council will consider adopting Resolution 06-1061 declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk of the city of Goodyear and entitled amendment number one to the amended and restated Gila River Indian Community Water Rights Settlement Agreement. Council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1066 approving and authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one to the amended and restated Gila River Indian Community Water Rights Settlement Agreement. Item V, Council will consider adopting Resolution 06-1049 authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Litchfield Park, providing for the lease of portions of the Goodyear Justice Facility located at 986 South Litchfield Road in the city of Goodyear to the city of Litchfield Park for use by their court. Item W, Council will consider accepting the dedication of right-of-way and a temporary construction easement generally located along the north side of Van Buren Street west of Litchfield Road. Item X, Council will consider approving a contract authorizing the purchase from Schneider's of Hanover Snacks, Inc., of 9,767 square feet of real property for $34,185, located along Bullard Avenue, that is needed as a right-of-way for traffic interchange at Bullard Avenue and I-10, and authorize the mayor, the city manager, the city attorney, and city clerk to execute all documents and to take all actions necessary to carry out the terms of the contract. Item Y, Council will consider accepting the dedication of a temporary construction easement generally located along the north side of Van Buren Street west of Litchfield Road. Item V, Council will consider approving an agreement with Newland Communities, providing for the conveyance and operation and maintenance of the Corquet Basin Water Reclamation Facility, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Item AA, Council will consider postponing until the August 28, 2006, regular meeting consideration of ordinance number 2006-1004 regarding an amendment to Article II, Article III, and Article IV of the zoning ordinance of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, adopted May 24, 1999, as amended to define body piercing studio, massage establishment, and tattoo studio, to allow for massage establishments, tattoo studios, and body piercing studios, subject to additional staff review requirements and separation requirements, providing separability and providing for an effective date. Item BB, Council will consider awarding a professional services contract to Black &amp; Beach Corporation in an amount not to exceed $785,000 for utility master planning to develop comprehensive water, wastewater, and reuse master plans, and provide a phased project implementation plan for the city, and authorize the city manager to execute all documents. Council will consider awarding a design-build contract to Camp Dresser and McKee, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $56,160,000 contingent upon an approved development reimbursement agreement between the city and Newland Communities for the funding of the waterman reverse osmosis water campus facilities, related facilities, and project expenses. This contract will include the planning, design, preconstruction, and construction services associated with a 5.0 MGD RO water campus and brine management facilities and associated project support facilities to serve the southern planning area. Council also authorizes the city manager to execute all documents at such time as a development reimbursement agreement becomes final. Council will consider awarding a contract to Alliance Service and Control Specialists, Inc., for obtaining all required permits, designing, providing all material, equipment, and labor necessary to install and commission a citywide supervisory control and data acquisition system for Water Resources Department facilities within the city of Goodyear in the amount of a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed $2,71,277, and authorize the city manager to execute all documents. Council will consider awarding a CM@Risk contractor, contract with Archer Western Contractors in an amount not to exceed $39,3,925, to assist in the design and perform construction services for capacity upgrades for the next phase of construction at the 157th Avenue WRF Phase 2B, which will bring the plant capacity to 6.0 MGD, and authorize the city manager to execute all documents. Council will consider awarding an amendment of the contract with EUSI LLC contingent upon an approved development reimbursement agreement between the city and Newland Communities associated with the implementation of projects to design and build a 5.1 million gallon-per-day reverse osmosis water facility and associate brine management facilities at a cost of $64,580,000, and the drilling and development of at least four water production wells in the southern well field at a cost of $6 million. The amendment will transfer payment for program management services on these projects to Newland Communities. Council will consider authorizing the city manager to execute all documents at such time as a development reimbursement agreement becomes final. Item CC, and the last one. Council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1068 authorizing the city's jointer in an amicus brief being prepared and filed by the League of Arizona Cities and Towns in support of the town of Gilbert in Gilbert versus Maricopa County litigation on county island fire districts, and authorizing the city manager and city attorney to execute all documents and to take all actions necessary to join in such amicus brief.
Okay, thank you, Lynn and Dee. Would anyone in the public wish to...
Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilmember Antoniak?
Eight B-B. B as in boy. B as in boy.
Two Bs.
Staff, so where are my questions?
Okay, other items to be removed?
Which one did we just remove?
Eight B-B.
Okay.
Further? Okay, I would ask for eight N, and--
And is it Nancy?
Yes, or November.
Or November.
Ah.
First Frank Kenney.
But, and I really have nothing more than a question to ask, so I don't want to-- I'd like to ask the question before the votes. I expect to support the vote. So, would you, same category, or do you want--
Same category.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with yours? Eight B-B. And what we're doing, council, is we're simply asking for clarification on these two items, and if we get it and we're satisfied, we'll move to a vote.
Okay. Yeah, my question related to eight B-B is just wanting something on the record kind of stating where the money's coming-- I know it's here publicly, but if I'm somebody in the public and I see $168 million-plus consent agenda item, I'm going to have a question. And so, I just want to be sure that where the money's coming from.
That's item eight A.
Eight--
B-B.
B as in boy.
Agregatable.
I aggregated them. One--
B.
One through five is $168 million plus. Between those five contracts, six contracts.
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Antoniak, items one, three, and one-half of item four would be paid for by the city. The other outstanding items would be developer and contributor projects.
So, one, three, and four?
Correct.
Half of four would be paid for by the city. Okay, so twenty, twenty-two. So roughly 23 million of the $168 million--
Correct.
Is paid for by the city.
Yes.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Now, I think, Sean, you need to stay there. Mine is on eight N, and for the public, that's to award a contract to Burgess and Nyepel for a contract for groundwater modeling and engineering support services associated with Assured Water Supply Designations. Two questions, Sean. One is, is there any physical drilling involved here? Is this strictly computer?
No, to the best of my knowledge, it is not. It's to investigate not only the physical availability of the groundwater, but we've asked for the water quality component to be added. It's part of our Assured Water Supply Application that's pending with ADWR. We're required to provide a hydraulic model.
And maybe that's going to answer my second question. You know, the Assured Water-- 100-year Assured Water Supply is basically a fundamental underpinning of development in this valley, and we come to expect that that will be determined in every particular development, and that there will be an assurance of 100-year water supply. This seems to want to evaluate that. Now, does that mean we're updating that? Does it in any way reflect on the accuracy of previous estimates, or it just sort of takes me back because the 100-year is so crucial?
Correct. What we're trying to obtain, the information requested, is we want to quantify and back up our Assured Water Supply Application that is currently pending. And if, through Burgess and Nyepel's investigation, additional water supplies are available, if we find other supplies, other sources, we will then go back in and amend our application and ask for a larger, essentially, a bucket of water. Kind of look at it that way.
Is it just the quantifier or the quality also?
It's-- well, the quality component, there's some minimal requirements that ADWR asks for. We've asked Burgess and Nyepel to give us a better idea of the quality. As mayor and council are aware of, we've looked for some water sources on the western side of Goodyear, and the quality has been less than pleasing. So what we're trying to obtain and ascertain is, are there other areas within the city that we're not currently looking for water that could yield low TDS, you know, the whole brine component, low water, I mean, high-quality water?
My understanding has been that the developer always had to demonstrate 100-year water-- Assured Water Supply.
Correct.
Are we-- do we do this periodically, that we provide a modeling of this and provide it to the developers? Or is this a unique requirement?
Yeah, as a municipality, we're required at some point to have the Assured Water Supply Designation that has been put on us by the state. They have asked us to go in and amend that application.
Maybe--
ADWR sent us a letter, I believe, last fall, asking us to amend and go in and, I guess, we quantify our Assured Water Supply Designation, which we're in the process of doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Burgess and Nyepel is here. If you have, I guess, more technical or detailed questions, I'd be happy to bring them up and ask them.
Is this a common thing, to do this every several years, or?
Yes, sir. In what it is, the city is--
Shirley.
Sorry. How are they going? There's--
I'm Shirley Rose of Burgess and Nyepel, and Mr. Mayor, council. Yes, the city is a designated provider, and it is as a-- it's part of the rules to keep your designation. The city has to show that the water is there, and your reference to developers showing that, that applies actually to a certificate. And while it's the city's policy generally to have developers support bringing in the water, it is the city's sole responsibility as a designated provider to show DWR that the water is indeed here. And that volume of water had been proven by previous models, only up to a certain volume. It was 100 years, but it was based on a certain population. Well, as you well know, your population has expanded considerably, and so DWR is now requiring that you go back and reevaluate that and prove the 100 years for the population that you're looking at and projecting now. So yes, they are requiring this designation.
That helps me. Any other?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other items to be pulled? Okay, looks like we have some support on consent agenda items eight A through CC. Kind of have a motion to approve those.
I move the adopt resolution A through Z, eight-- A-A and B-B and C-C, as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Motion from councilmember Lord, and the second from councilmember Scott. We have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavaliere?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm told that the city manager, lawyer, and I have to take two minutes to sign documents associated with this consent agenda. They have to be submitted tomorrow morning. So if we could take a two-minute break, and we'll meet at 6:40, if we could do that, please. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And we'll now move to the business part of our agenda, and we'll start with an update on our university recruitment project with Kelly Dalton.
Good evening, mayor, council. While the consent agenda was being read, I was trying to think of some way to incorporate a song or dance into the presentation, but it's not going to happen. During my presentation, I will provide an overview of our efforts thus far to attract private colleges or universities to the City of Goodyear, the institutions that we would like to pursue further discussions with, and talk about the next steps in the On February 17, 2006, the city distributed a private college/university request for information to organizations and publications across the country. The RFI described the city's vision for attracting private colleges or universities to the community, and requested that interested institutions respond in the following categories. We asked that they provide their structure of their institution, its financial situation, expected partnering needs, and other relevant information. The objective of the RFI was to, one, inform the higher education community of Goodyear's interest in attracting private quality education to the city; two, to determine if there were schools interested in expanding to the City of Goodyear; and, three, to initiate a dialogue between the City of Goodyear and those institutions. The deadline to receive responses was May 5, 2006. Not knowing what, if, any responses we would receive, we were very pleased to receive nine responses. The level of quality of many of the institutions that responded far surpassed our initial The city, in coordination with our consultants on this initiative, TriAdvocates, created an ad hoc committee to assist in evaluating the responses that we received. The committee consisted of individuals with specific capabilities to review and comment on the received proposals. I have provided you each with bios, and in some instances, resumes on these individuals, but let me take a few minutes to quickly summarize some of their experience. Kimberly Yee served as senior staff member for the Arizona Legislature Senate Committee on Education from 1998 through 2003. More recently, Ms. Yee served as Governor Schwarzenegger's Deputy Cabinet Secretary, where one of her responsibilities was to provide education policy advisement to the governor. Rodrick Miller serves as the Director of Strategic Planning for the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Among his many responsibilities at GPAC, Rodrick is responsible for coordinating and managing local committees and coalitions to strategize ways to build strong and sustainable local economies. Knox Kimberley is the managing principal of TriAdvocates, and has a strong background in economic development and a thorough understanding of public-private partnerships that he has used to provide guidance throughout the process. John Kelly, also with TriAdvocates, served as the federal intergovernmental coordinator and policy advisor for the Office of the Governor during his time with the Arizona Board of Regents, and also handled education policy at the federal level during his time serving as legislative director for Arizona Congressman Jim Colby. And finally, Julie Reese, who is with us here this evening, was responsible for outreach and policy development for Mesa Mayor Keno Hocker, and has been instrumental throughout the RFI process. The committee evaluated the responses based on the following criteria. As I mentioned earlier, we asked for the institution's structure, its financial situation, as well as expected partnering needs. In addition, we examined the thoroughness and completeness of the responses, the strength of exhibition of interest in pursuing specific negotiations with the city, the legal compatibility of the city's of the responses with the city's interpretation of the limits and capabilities in partnering with a private college or university, whether the institution demonstrated a vision for integrating its main campus with a future Goodyear campus, and finally, whether the institution is accredited and has made plans to achieve that accreditation at a Goodyear campus. Based upon these criteria, we have decided to move forward with more serious discussions with five institutions. Before I present specific information about each institution, let me provide a few general Each school provides high-quality education to its students. Each school is accredited at its main campus and has demonstrated an intention to extend that accreditation to a future Goodyear campus. Each school has a strong reputation for supporting the community in which it currently resides. For those of you on council and in the audience who are sports fans, four of the five schools have established athletic programs. And finally, each of the schools participates in federal financial aid assistance programs. I will now provide a brief overview of each of the institutions. This list has not been prioritized, in other words, the order in which the schools will appear is not indicative of how they compare to one another. All right, the University of St. Francis serves more than 4,300 students nationwide, with 1,800 students at its main campus in Juliet, Illinois. It is a Catholic liberal arts university. The university offers more than 60 undergraduate academic areas of study, three bachelor's degree completion programs, and 10 graduate programs. The university's nursing program is one of its strongest programs, and graduates consistently experience a pass rate well into the 90th percentile. In addition, the university's placement rates of graduates into jobs or graduate schools is, on average, 93 percent. Champlain College. Champlain College is a private, nonprofit college that was established in 1878. It is located in Burlington, Vermont, and has a total enrollment of approximately 2,527 students. The college experiences a 97 percent employment rate for its graduates, and in addition to its campus in Burlington, it also enrolls 150 students at its partner campus in Mumbai, Finally, the U.S. News and World Reports ranked Champlain College as a top-tier baccalaureate institution in the North. Notre Dame College. Notre Dame is located in South Euclid, Ohio. It is a Catholic institution that was established in 1922. It has approximately 600 part-time-- excuse me, full-time students and 650 part-time students. The college offers 29 majors in 29 disciplines, and has a long history of providing not only traditional educational opportunities, but courses of study for non-traditional and part-time students as well. The University of the Incarnate Word is located in San Antonio, Texas, with schools in China and Mexico. It is a faith-based Roman Catholic institution established in 1881 and enrolls approximately 5,400 students. The university also operates two high schools with a total enrollment of 950 students. And this fall, in 2006, its first-class-- And this fall, in 2006, its first class will begin in its new pharmacy school. In 2001, the university's online business program was chosen as one of the best in the country by U.S. News and World Report. And in 2004, the university attained a ranking of number six by Consumer Digest Magazine as the best value for private universities. And lastly, Alma College. Alma College is located in Alma, Michigan. It was founded in 1886 by the Presbyterian Synod of Michigan. It has a student body of 1,284 students and 84 full-time faculty. Alma offers 28 different majors and 21 departments, and was given a Best in the Midwest designation by PrincetonReview.com. 90 percent of Alma's graduates applying to medical school are accepted compared to the national average of 46.6 percent. And 80 percent of their graduates are admitted into law school compared to the national average of 55.6 percent. As you can see, each school has tremendous credentials. Thus far, representatives from three of these schools have visited the city of Goodyear. The President of Alma College, Dr. Sandra Tracy, and her Vice President of Administration and Finance, Jerry Scobie, visited, as did the President of Notre Dame College, Dr. Andrew Roth, along with his vice presidents, John Phillips and Karen Polking. And finally, the Provost of the University of the Incarnate Word, Dr. Terry DeSiena, visited the city as well. We expect that individuals from the other two institutions will be visiting the city shortly. During each of their visits, we arranged meetings with individuals, both within the city staff and outside of the city hall, to inform them about the developments within Goodyear, as well as the West Valley and the entire state. They met with individuals from the Maricopa Association of Governments to discuss the tremendous growth in Goodyear and the West Valley, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council to provide an overview of major employers and demographics in the Greater Phoenix region. Wes Mark discussed the landscape of higher education within the state. They were given a briefing on the city center, economic development projects occurring within the city, as well as an overview of the city's general plan. In addition to further discussions with these schools, we will be initiating a market analysis to better understand the demand for private higher education within the state. Our conversations with these institutions indicate that such analysis would be extremely beneficial to both the city and the interests of institutions. Depending upon the final scope of the project, we anticipate that the study may last up to eight weeks. Of course, there is still much work ahead. We are still in the exploratory phase of determining possible locations for these institutions and other financial considerations. The city's approach up until this point has been unique and yielded significant results. The Chronicle of Higher Education, a well-known national publication that features higher education news across the country, published an article today, and I didn't have anything to do with the timing, that highlights Goodyear's search, which I've distributed to each of The establishment of a private institution will speak volumes about the values of this community. There is a strong correlation between the desires of the City's Image Committee and the objectives of this project. The committee identified Goodyear as a community valuing education and lifelong learning, cultural, recreational, and community experiences, and opportunities for business and employment. We know what kind of an impact this will have on the community, and the educational opportunities it will provide for our young people. I look forward to having the opportunity to bring back more good news as the project continues. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask the Council, anyone in the public like to make a comment or have a question on this significant event? Okay, saying that, again, this is not for a decision, strictly information gathering and an update. Are there any comments or questions for Vice Mayor?
Yes, I simply want to say, for the people who don't know what the Chronicle of Higher Education is, it is a periodical that's probably read by faculty members from first year up through presidents. When I was at the university, that's something you picked up and you read from cover to cover. So with that, and it's a very prestigious periodical, it's very prestigious, and it's in the higher education circles, and to have an article about our mayor and what has happened in the city of Goodyear in that periodical is very prestigious, and it puts the city of Goodyear on the map as far as higher education is concerned, and you might be hearing from other universities.
I think so. Councilmember Holland?
I'm very excited about this, and some of the council folks had an opportunity to meet with the college people that came and the university people, and it was really nice to see their enthusiasm for our city, so I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Kelly, thank you for your presentation, and all your hard work that went into this. And I agree, we, most of the council did meet with the universities that came, and the thing that was most impressive to me was the fact that the president of each of these universities or colleges actually came here to talk to us about it. So there's a sincere interest in the whole of this visit here so far. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Well, first of all, I'd like to credit the mayor and thank you for your pursuant in this for our city. It's just very exciting, and I think we have a new formula in Goodyear now. We're going to live and work in Goodyear, we're going to play, we're going to work, and now we're going to educate in Goodyear, and I think that just equals to sustainability for our city. And I thank you for your great presentation.
Yeah, I can't do anything but echo, and I think the mayor gets a lot of kudos here. This was your idea, solely your idea, and you brought it to us, and we embraced it, and the staff embraced it, and was running with it. So this is the first of many steps, but it's ultimately successful. You know, nine-tenths of our 100 percent of the credit should go to the center seat here. This was definitely an idea that you came up with early, and could be monumental for a city on the Southwest Valley and in the state. So kudos to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kelly, for your presentation. And I'm elated with five universities that we've attracted. And I wanted to have one comment to make, and that was made by two of the presidents that I talked with during an interview. And they said that in their tenure in higher education, that at no time have they ever had anything like this from a city going out requesting information to locate in that particular city. That's a feather in the hat for you, Mr. Mayor, no question about it, and for the council as a whole. These people were friends that we talked with. They were definitely friends, and the information that they had is enlightening, to say the least, and the excitement that they generated with us certainly bodes well for the future of Goodyear. One of them is going to be, I hope, be interested enough to break the ground here, and from there we move into the realm of higher education, and that's a credit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Just last comment, I worked with Kelly on this over the last several months, and everybody needs to know, this lady directly works with university presidents and provosts. They call her directly, and she, they respect her, and she's the Commander Chief of Forces on this one. So I don't think, I know we would not be where we are today without your assistance. So Kelly, you've done a superb job, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
As we move to the next subject, you know, as, you know, when you're elected mayor, you're also elected to be the Presiding Officer of this particular meeting, which we do every couple of weeks. And in that context, I'm making an assumption that the people of this community expect me to, to the extent I'm able assure that how we conduct this meeting complies with law. And in that context, I would like to preface this particular subject with some comments and a request. First off, for everybody's information, on Friday, I removed this subject from the agenda, because I believe that there may very well have been an unintentional, and I repeat that word, unintentional open meeting law violation. And to the public, you've got a lot of councils throughout this state, and it isn't, it is not infrequent for us to violate unintentionally open meeting law. The problem is, when you go to make a decision, and you, knowing you did it, or thinking you may have, that you still consummate a decision. So what was done, if in fact I'm correct, was not particularly unusual, and was certainly unintentional, in my perspective. But I found that, okay, so I pull it from the agenda, three council members, Councilmember Lord, Councilmember Holland, and Councilmember Scott, using the authority vested in them by our charter, disagreed with me, and were able, and legitimately so, to put it back on the agenda. So it's on the agenda. To the council, I certainly urge prudence and caution on our part this evening, and I'd like to make one final effort to address this, and address my reasoning in this subject. On Thursday, I was advised by a council member that three people, three council members had decided to vote in a specific way, and the fourth was on the verge of agreeing with them. The potential fourth vote was a person speaking with me. This person correctly suspected that I was going to be surprised by the vote of these people. So this person wanted to prepare me for that. This advisement by this person was entirely in good faith, and I appreciate that. And that's exactly, we had a nice spirited conversation, but there's no doubt the person had the courage to come to me and, in good faith, prepare me. The possibility that there was an open meeting law violation, I don't think crossed either of our minds at the time. It wasn't until later, I think the same day, that I felt like there was reason to suspect that either simultaneously or sequentially, four council members outside of an agendized public hearing had expressed to one another the subject to be discussed for decision-making, and at least three of those may very well have stated how they would cast their vote. The violation of an open meeting law, if in fact there is a violation, again, has been, I think, inadvertent. Its inadvertency will be of less consequence to the Attorney General than the fact that it occurred, if in fact it leads to a vote. And it will be important to the attorney that the consultant may hire, and that consultant has not indicated, that consultant would hire one, but if that consultant hires an attorney because that consultant has been harmed by our decision. For me to be more specific would jeopardize future legal positions in this situation, and therefore I have to stop. But if any one of you on this council agree with my concern, I would ask that person to make a motion to cancel or postpone this agenda item. Vice Mayor?
Mayor Cavill, I move that Agenda Item A9B, Council Action on the Scope of Work for the City's Contract CX-0538-06, will GM Consulting be continued for at least 45 days for cooling off period, either to be brought up at council events or later council meeting? So move.
Second motion? I have a motion from Vice Mayor Cavill, and a second from Councilmember Souza, to postpone, I believe, action on this, to continue action on this Agenda Item 9B to a date in the future, sometime 45 days thereafter. Okay, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Holland?
I take exception to your comments, Mayor, about a violation of the open meeting law that led to this motion. I'm very concerned about it because we were kind of given a pattern of how we were going to do this, and I really felt that we followed that pattern. We were going to redo the contract, we submitted changes to that contract, we expected it to be brought forward tonight with those changes in it, and so I'm kind of surprised that you would say that the violation occurred. We did, we were talked to by our city attorney that informed us that it was going to occur, that this agenda item may be taken off, and at that point in time, we got an opportunity to say whether or not we wanted it taken off. I, for one, wanted it left on there because I think we're just dragging it out, and for 45 days to go on with no decision being made is very, very difficult. We'd like to leave for recess, knowing that we got as much accomplished as we possibly could. Thank you.
Councilmember Lord?
Mine's rather long, but I did clear it to the city attorney. You know, there are moments in life when keeping silent becomes a fault, and speaking out an obligation, a civic duty, a moral challenge, categorically imperative, from which we cannot escape. I wish I had created those words, but Orina Facilli did. Recent events around the hiring of the retail consultant began early March, when I received a phone call from the mayor asking me to support in the hiring of Gail Rusling for the position of retail consultant. He felt the city needed to fill the position in the Economic Development Department.
Excuse me, Councilmember, if we have this discussion on 9B, that will be appropriate, but this is specific whether or not we want to postpone this because of what I think is an open meeting law violation, and we need to stick this particular conversation to state law and the open meeting law. Now, if in fact we continue to discuss this, that's entirely appropriate.
Could I ask the city attorney, since I cleared this with you?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, Councilmember Lord, I understand your statement, and I feel it is appropriate for the agenda item as presented currently, the agenda item, and we did not discuss this potential agenda item or this potential motion. It could be not relevant to this particular motion. You may save it till another motion.
Another motion tonight? Do I have a chance in this meeting to make the statement and review? Because, you know, once you've been charged with something, I think you certainly should be able to give the background of where you've gone, you know, the procedure, and how we've come to this point. But I will just address then this, okay?
On this motion, yes.
On this motion, okay. In reviewing the COACT 069949B, Items 8 and 9 on the agenda, I have to say this, we were in a work session, and we were, not a work session, a special meeting, and it was asked that, by the mayor, that the contract be rewritten. So this is the contract as rewritten, and I, when I left that meeting, I had, the one thing that I thought was necessary is that the consultant, working in coordination with economic development, that they would both be equal in the amount of work they would be doing to create a piece of paper, and that economic development was not doing all of that for the consultant. I believe the written language and the resources stated in the revised contract clearly gives the consultant the latitude of a director on the city's staff, and not that of an independent contractor. I also do not agree with changing of the position's title from consultant to contract manager. I believe the rewritten contract undermines the responsibility of the city's staff by giving the position the same decision-making power of the economic development director. While I understand the possible impact of my statement, and I certainly am feeling that right now, Mayor, in addition, because of the manner in which this person was hired, which I am not allowed to talk about at this time, it has caused consternation in the city's staff and the city council. I will be voting no on the COACT and recommending the contract be rescinded, and the city begin the proper process to hire a permanent director of retail.
Again, we need to stick to the open meeting law, whether or not that's violated, or whether we think it is, and if we, if it is, then we, as individuals, are, by the way, personally liable for an open meeting law violation. Okay?
I categorically deny it, so.
Categorically deny open meeting law violation?
I'm saying that I, like you said just a minute ago, my statement here, sorry, that I have unknowing- I have unknowingly committed any act of violation on this, truly unknowingly.
And I believe I said unintentional and inadvertent, twice.
Yes, you did, but I just wanted to say it myself.
Councilmember Antoniak?
I'm going to ask a question, I think it goes to the germaneness of, or it's germane, given the topic that you've brought up, Mayor, and that's the responsibility that our attorney may have to us here in this particular session. One, is this a discussion? I guess I would ask is, if we are to continue this, what responsibility inside the city does anybody have to look back at the actual action that we took in March or April in comparison to our June 21 meeting, in comparison to this evening, and derive from that what legal responsibility us as a seven may have, as well as any administrator within the city system may have?
Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, the enforcement of the open meeting law is typically handled by the Attorney General's Office through their open meeting law enforcement team. To the extent that we want to internally review, I would respectfully ask that the council authorize me to hire outside counsel, because I represent this whole entire board, and that may potentially present a conflict of interest for me as your attorney. But we certainly could do that if, and maybe we should do that, if we thought it was appropriate.
And I'll go a step further and say, Mayor, that I would agree with you on the continuation if that amendment was made. Because if you want to hire somebody to review the way this contract was that, the way it was done, I'll happily agree.
Councilmember Souza?
I'd like to respond to...
And I will say, I categorically deny, if there is any assumption, that outside of the three that you mentioned, or outside of the three that may have taken action prior to the discussions this evening, any wrongdoing on my part.
The attorney, city attorney, when the mayor contacted each and every one of the council members regarding the positioning of the individual in question, each one of the council member concurred with the mayor and gave him basically the authority to hire this individual. Now, to me, that was a 7-0 vote before this thing was...
If this is what I was going to be talking about, and so now he's talking about it, which is...
I think with this open meeting law issue on this particular motion, and that's, and if in fact this motion fails, then that will be appropriate to this question. Okay?
I answer the vote on the motion then.
You did, I know, I know, we've got a vote coming, but I'm not sure everybody has.
I'd like to ask, we have a recess coming up till August the 28th. There's a question here before us as to whether or not we violated open meeting law. I don't know of any violation that I've committed, but I'd be interested to find out if legally I did. I don't think so. But even more important than that, I have a problem with a 45-day delay here for discovery. I would be in favor of a special meeting of this council, say, within the next couple, three weeks, and giving us plenty of time to hire outside counsel to get to the bottom of this, so we can all make reasonable, intelligent decisions. But I would be opposed to tabling this issue for 45 days.
Is council, all of us going to be here during that period of time? That's the problem with that.
Well, we can do it by phone.
This could be, okay, well, we'll see. It could be an executive session, depends on where we go on this subject. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I stayed the 45 days for cooling off period in my motion specifically because I believe that it'll take that much time if we hired an outside consultant, an outside attorney, to work this thing out. I don't think three weeks is enough time for an outside attorney or an outside counselor to give us the information we need, and I feel that, because some of us won't be here, myself included, I think that the 45 days is appropriate, and I don't see anything wrong with 45 days. We're talking about a year's contract that started March, will end next March. It's a short contract, it's not something that's going to be here with us for a long time. We have had other contracts for several hundred thousand dollars more than that, that we've hired consultants for, that we've left up to the city management to determine the amount and determine the length of time that that contract was in for. This one was a short contract, it's a small amount of money, and I feel that we need that extra time if we are going to get an outside consultant or counselor to do this, which is probably a good idea. And I just feel that that's at least that much time that should be allotted to it.
Councilmember Scott?
I appreciate the input from Councilmember Cavalier, and his opinion is different than mine, but neither one of us are attorneys, and yet we have a couple of attorneys in the room here that work for the city. How much time do we need to do this from a attorney point of view?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's somewhat difficult to say because I'm not sure what your individual schedules are for the next few weeks, because I assume that any attorney that was hired would want to talk to each and every one of you, so it'd kind of be dependent upon that. I would say 45 days is more than enough, I would say you probably leave at least three to four weeks, somewhere in that range. And it just depends on schedules. The facts are not that difficult, it's just what happened, what didn't happen, it's just a matter of talking to people.
Mayor, would it be possible then to do this in the most expedient way possible? And then if it takes three or four weeks, great, if it takes a little longer, fine, but at least we're working on it, maybe we can do it in two weeks.
Maybe possible. Councilmember Antoniak?
Can maybe make a suggestion based on your motion, and that is that the attorney get together his thoughts, because I think we're putting him quite a bit on the spot here, and come back in the next 48 or 72 hours, we table a motion until that time, call a special meeting Thursday or Friday, Wednesday, I don't care. I got a duty, I got an oath to uphold, I'll come back and we'll evaluate this process, look at it, and figure out whether or not, I have a feeling we may go back and forth all night long on a bunch of different votes here. But I think the attorney has some information that's on the record, may want to be gathered, I don't know.
I did talk to the, I promised of the Attorney General of the state of Arizona before I made my remarks. I did my homework, ladies and gentlemen, and from what I know, there are red flags here, there is reason to suspect a violation of the open meeting law. If you move to a decision on that, you will become personally and financially responsible, and you will embarrass the city on that. This subject can be delayed. All we have to do is continue this particular agenda item, and whether it's, Councilmember Scott, in four weeks, or we do it in conjunction with the retreat, or whatever, whatever you all like on that. But we need to get off of this fact that we had people talking together about this subject, however unintentional and inadvertent the possible relationship to open meeting law violation may have been. So that's all I really want, I think we need to do here. And then we can revise the contract so it's an open, new contract, we meet on it, we don't even have to see it before the meeting, there'll be no problem with an open meeting law violation, and we'll make a decision. But don't put this city at risk because you're certain you didn't do anything wrong. You very well may have, and as a mayor, I'm accomplishing my responsibility by informing you of that fact. Councilmember Lord?
I have a question with attorney. And again, this does not come under this COACT tonight, but it comes under the idea that we're going to delay it. If during the process, when this first began, say something like the mayor violated something that we've talked about on the process of hiring, does that come up within this scope of when I have that chance to discuss with that attorney?
If we investigate?
Yes.
I would assume we would ask outside counsel to investigate all the issues regarding this contract.
That satisfies me, thank you.
And I could also make my comments at that time?
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, I've been sitting on this council for nearly eight years, and I'm sick, I really am sick, to hear what is transpiring here this evening. You know, this city holds its head up high, and, you know, if these charges are founded, it's a shame on us, and it's a shame on the city as a whole. I hope, I hope that this is in the negative, and that there weren't any heating held amongst four people that would constitute a violation of Arizona law, heating law. But, you know, we're all proud of our city, and to hear stuff like this come out at an open meeting, and to have to live with this with our constituency, is a shame on our house. I'm sorry to say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilman Souza, I appreciate your thoughts, but I think that you heard from enough of the council people, and they said, "We deny that there was a problem with the open meeting laws," so that should make you feel better right there. I think if we are smart enough, we've been doing this now for quite a while, and some of us have been on the councils much longer than I have, feel that we followed all the rules. It doesn't mean that we can't say we'd like to have that item left on there or taken off, that is not a vote, that is a discussion, that doesn't even say how we're going to vote. So I just wanted to make you feel better about what you may think went on.
No matter what you say, Madam, it does make me feel better, not at all.
Okay. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and getting back to the motion, I have to join with what Councilman Souza just stated, and that is, I've been with the city of Goodyear in my capacity and others since 1995, when I was on Board of Adjustments, then Planning and Zoning Commission, and then finally elected to the council. And I've attended many council meetings during that time. This has been one of the very finest councils that the entire valley is jealous of because lack of anything that is out of the ordinary, other than being a straight, shooting council, a city that you'd be very happy to be a part of, and I hear it continually every day, this city council is legitimate, this city council in Goodyear is a city council that you guys should really be proud of, because there is no illegitimacy within the ranks of this council. I want to keep it that way, and I fear for what the future holds if something isn't done to make certain that we can at least be patient enough to wait and look at something in a broader scope, and by outside counsel if possible, if needed, and make a decision at that time. I don't think that we should rush into this, and I feel that we're going to lose our reputation, and I hate to see that happen worse than anything else. I love this city, and that's why I'm on the city council. I'm here for you citizens, and I want this city council to be the very best in the entire state, and I want us to have the best city because of it, and we've grown quite well because of it, and I don't want that to change. That's the reason for my motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Another comment here, the, if in fact we do postpone this, we vote in favor of the motion, from my discussion, it would appear that if we've caught a potential open meeting law violation and we didn't act in accordance with what I thought were the discussions, but in fact stopped the discussions and did not go to a decision-making forum, as we would do if we do Item 2, then there's probably nothing for us to regret, except we need, I was told, you need instruction. Well, we need that all the time, we always need recurring training in open meeting laws, so we'll do that. But if we do not proceed to a vote on 9B, the likelihood of any problem with the state Attorney General is almost negative, particularly since, as I said, this was inadvertent. For us to proceed is, in my view, the subject we're talking about here is a subject close to my heart, I would love to discuss it in public. The fact is, I'm trying to protect you and the city of Goodyear, whether you appreciate that or not is irrelevant to me, frankly, but that's my job, and that's why I suggested that we have a motion, and that we not talk 9B tonight. So...
I move the vote, please.
Any opposition to moving the vote?
This is coming back, so the idea is that this would come back August 28.
If that's what, that would be fine.
Okay.
If that's, if that's the understood motion.
That could be fine, I think, acceptable.
Do you need an amendment to the motion, that it come back August 28?
If that's... I guarantee it'll come back August 28, okay?
As long as it's on the record, it comes back August 28.
All right, put it down, Kavanaugh said he'd bring it back to 28th.
I'll amend it if you wish.
I think you've got a lot of work on your hands.
Amendment motion to include that it will return to the council agenda on, that's August 28, council meeting.
Okay.
And I'll amend my motion, my second motion.
Okay, so I have a, glad to have a vote on each, on the amendment then.
We have an amendment, you have a second on the amendment?
Yes, we do.
Well, you have, first of all, you have moved the motion, so we need to get a two-thirds vote on that, unless we have by consent that we're going to...
Yeah, I did, I got, no one wanted to continue the deliberation.
Okay, then you have a motion and amendment?
I have an, okay. The amendment to the motion is to meet on 28 August, if in fact we pass the motion itself. But all those in favor of meeting on the 28th of August on this subject, if in fact we meet in the future at all, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the main motion is to delay Item 9B, and I'd like a...
You want, oh, sorry, no, I apologize.
And I'd like a roll call vote on that, if I could.
Point of question, is that what I say, point of...
Clarification.
Point of clarification. We delay this to the 28th. We're voting to delay, okay, to delay this to the 28th, and because of that, that protects us in a more legal sense, is that what the mayor was trying to say?
That's, yes, I believe that's what he is saying, and...
And is that, is that the fact, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Already voted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Cast 6-1.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break.
This evening, the clerk just passed out to you a list of sanitation questions and answers. These are typical questions and answers that we are receiving in terms of our educational program, based on participation, the financial impact, the missed collections, disposal of old refuse containers, and alley collections. These questions are questions that we anticipate receiving, some of them we are currently receiving right now with the implementation of the Container Choice brochure that recently went out, which I'm sure you've all seen. And I would like to inform you that after that brochure went out, we are receiving approximately 100 hits per day on our website for our residents responding to container choice. We are receiving a lot of the mail-in forms. We haven't had a chance to tabulate those yet, and we are averaging about 75 telephone calls a day as well by sanitation staff. And for the most part, we are receiving a lot of comments about, you know, sort of kudos to council for taking the steps forward to bring this program to fruition. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I'd like to ask now for comments from the public, comments from the public. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance number 061018. Ordinance to adopt amended provisions of Chapter 10 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the implementation of rates and fees for an automated solid waste and recyclable program, to provide for severality and appeal, and to provide for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion except ordinance 2006, here's 1018, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, second from Councilmember Lord, open for discussion. Start with Councilmember Scott.
Brian, I have a question. I've, I don't know when Kirby went out, not for sure, which is really nice, but I've already had two phone calls with regard to difficulty getting through on the phone number that's listed there. I guess, from what I'm understanding, I should have dialed it myself, but it goes to finance, it's referred somewhere else, and then it goes to sanitation, and there's a message, someone will call you back, and the call never comes, or it doesn't come in a reasonable amount of time. So you're getting a lot of calls, 75 a day, which you might need more help on that other end of that phone.
That's a possibility that we're considering. There are two different phone numbers that are being provided there. One is to go to the finance department if you have questions about setting up your account. A key component of this is that everyone in going online has to provide their sanitation account number in order to select their containers. If they don't have that account number, then they are referred back to finance. The other telephone number is the sanitation hotline, and those are the people in the sanitation division who will help answer questions about containers.
That number in there?
That number is in there as well.
Thank you, Ms. Msousa.
First of all, Ms. Antonia, congratulate you on the brochure, the amended brochure. Fabulous document. Was Paula involved in that?
I was gonna say, I can't take personal credit for that. That was Paula and her staff, Michael Leon, who took the basic information that sanitation staff was able to provide them and put together a wonderful design on that.
Excellent, yeah, you're to be congratulated. One question I have about the type of material that's gonna be picked up. I guess in other cities where I have family members, regarding shredded paper, is that it's excluded in those communities? Are we going to exclude it in ours?
Shredded paper is excluded from recycling.
Well, if I shred a document at home, I, the, I get information from a bank that says, here's a credit card for you, and they give you a number, well, I destroy that, and it's shredded. What do I do with that?
Small quantities of shredded paper can go into your recycling container, but large quantities of shredded paper need to be put into your refuse container. And the reason for that is where the material goes, the recycled material going to the material recovery facility is not set up to be able to handle the large amounts of shredded paper that disperses throughout the facility.
Okay, so access amounts to go into the garbage container, small ones can go into...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Let me just check one. Thank you for Mr. Lord.
Vice Mayor.
Brian, what constitutes large quantities of shredded?
Vice Mayor, if you have a volume of shredded paper that would fill up a plastic bag, for example, that should go into your refuse container.
Okay.
If you have a small wastebasket of it, that can get by in your recycling container.
Councilmember Antonia? Just one brief question, the service suspension fee, that would not apply if it was changed in ownership, right? Somebody cancels there.
No, that's correct.
So it changes ownership.
Right. That is for, if somebody closes out their account at one address and then reopens the account the same year at the same address.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And item five, please discontinue with the furlough method. What is the fee for reactivating?
Councilmembers, so the reactivation fee for reactivating your account within the year is $125.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antonia?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Passed 7-0.
Okay, now I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only on this item.
Resolution, establishing sanitation rates and fees to recover full operating costs and costs associated with providing automated refuse and recycling services to the city of Goodyear and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution 061062, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Lord and second from Councilmember Sousa, it's open for discussion, resolution. Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antonia?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
7-0 passed.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to preliminary plat for the Villas at Palm Valley, and then after that we'll have the final plat. And I think Brett's doing this one.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I will combine the presentations for the preliminary final plat. And later in the presentation, I will speak to the difference between why we need both plats together this evening. The Villas at Palm Valley is a planned residential condominium community. It's generally located east of Pebble Creek Parkway. You can see it's north of Indian School Road. It's in Palm Valley Phase 5. Land uses surrounding the property include, to the east and north, single-family residential; to the south, vacant land that is zoned for mixed-use commercial; to the west is the facern at Pebble Creek multifamily or apartment complex. The, moving on to a different exhibit. The approximately nine-acre site will contain 58 units. There will be 16 buildings, all of which have received site plan approval. The development contains a mixture of building types. It has three duplex buildings, three triplex buildings, seven fourplex buildings, and three fiveplex buildings. The development will be served by internal driveways. You can see the main driveway here off Pebble Creek Parkway. There's also an emergency, emergency access-only point of access there. There are approximately four acres of common open space that are being proposed on the site. And now I will speak to the preliminary and the final plats. Section 15 of the city code discusses condominium and airspace planning, and it sets forth the process by which condominiums are subdivided. And currently, the code requires a preliminary condominium plat and a final condominium, a final condominium plat. The preliminary plat that you'll see this evening does not show a division of land into lots or tracts. It would more closely resemble a site plan. While, on the other hand, the final plat is needed to divide the airspace into units for sale in an effort to precisely record the condominium units. But Goodyear subdivision regulations do require that construction of all units must take place before the city council approves the condominium final plat. So the applicant is requesting a waiver to permit the development of the condominium units according to the city subdivision regulations. So as part of the waiver process, the council would approve the condominium final plat, and it would then allow the construction activity to take place so that the sale of the units could take place. The applicant is requesting the waiver because the residential condominium units will not be able to be offered for sale until a condominium plat is recorded. Staff anticipates during the next few months to work on an update to the city's subdivision regulations in Chapter 15 of the city code to amend that so that a waiver from the council would not be required in the future. I wanted to show you some conceptual building elevations. There's a view of the triplex building and the duplex building. And the fiveplex. Excuse me. And the bottom one is the fourplex. This case was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on June 21, 2006. At the meeting, one of the commissioners raised a concern regarding the points of access into the subdivision. Specifically, there was concern that if there was an accident in this area...
Zoom out, Brett.
Okay, this would be the main access to the subdivision. This would be a gated access for emergency use only. There was some concern by one of the commissioners that if there was an accident at this point, both of these entrances into the sub, into the internal parts of the subdivision would be blocked. And the fire department responded by saying that the drive aisle configuration was adequate. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a vote of 5 to 1 for the condominium preliminary plat. Since the planning commission meeting, staff has met with the fire chief, with representatives from the fire department, and also at the engineering department regarding the site configuration. And both departments have indicated that this drive aisle distance is adequate and it meets all the city's standards. The planning commission is forwarding a recommendation for approval of the plat and subject to the stipulations outlined in your staff reports. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Ty Coffindaffer with Visor Development is also available if there are any questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the applicant if he'd like to speak. It's up to you. You don't have to. And if we run into a problem on this, we'll let you speak then, so no problem. Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion, please, for the preliminary plat?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the condominium plat for the Villas at Palm Valley, subdividing 8.95 acres into 16 residential condo buildings with 58 dwelling units, generally located on the east side of Pebble Creek Parkway, 1,000 feet north of Indian School Road, within Phase 5 of Palm Valley P80.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniac and a second from Councilmember Lord, it's open for discussion, preliminary plat. Vice Mayor Cavalier?
I just have a question. Is this a family-oriented complex, or is this for adults? And is it gated? I guess, two questions I have.
Yes, Mayor, council members. It is for family, and yes, it is, it is a gated community.
Because I, where it's located, it would appear to me that it would be much more suited to an adult community.
Well, most of, it's not designated as a age, as far as the classification for who lives there. But yes, in most of these communities, there's probably maybe 2% that have families, and everyone else is probably...
Because I noticed there was a swimming pool, pool area, and a small tot lot, and that's about all that's in there.
Yeah, there's a putting green on the other side, yes.
Mayor, just a point of clarification, that this is within single-family dwelling units, not within, that's not Pebble Creek that wraps it.
I understand.
Okay.
But it's close enough that, to me, it just would be more, it's just a question. I don't care.
Well, we're certainly open to sell to whomever's there.
Councilmember Sousa?
Mr. Coffindaffer? The entryway, where those bulges are, what are they for?
That is for turnaround, for pack up.
Turnaround, yeah, because that's gated.
Yeah, before you get into the gate, if you decide to turn around.
And my next question would be for Brett. You know, this is in close proximity to the Arizona Motor Sports Park. I'd like to have that also include in the noise, ordinance? If I may. We never, yeah, we've been successful in court on one issue, but there's still one hanging in there. I just want to be safe that we have that covered. That would be, well, it's not in there, but I assume it would be 16.
16, under stipulations, right?
Public sales report will show, as I overflight and the operation of aircraft landing at or taking off from Luke Air Force Station and/or Phoenix Goodyear Airport. And Phoenix Goodyear Airport, heck, well, it's further away than Arizona Motor Sports Park, Motor Sports Park. And we've had, you know, a lot of complaints from people from Pebble Creek relative to this, and this would be in closer proximity to...
Who made the motion?
I made, I made the motion, but I'll...
Would you agree to incorporate that, or do you want to, we could have an amendment?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you need an amendment, but...
Well, that's, you can do it either, but we'll certainly have an amendment, we'll hold off on it.
I agree, but I mean, I'll...
We'll hold off on it then until we continue the discussion, but there will be an amendment on it.
Technically, you need an amendment.
Okay.
That just got over there.
Okay.
So applicant has been made aware of what the issue is?
Right.
It's like it's news to the applicant.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the applicant is comfortable with revising the stipulations required.
I amend my motion, or I'd move to amend my motion, then, that stipulation 16 reflect Arizona Motor Sports Park, and that the buyers of these units shall be notified through their public sales report of that existing in the area. However, you need to legally word it.
I have a motion to amend 16 as stated. I have a second.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Antoniac and a second from Councilmember Scott. Again, it's the amendment on 16 to reflect the Arizona Motor Sports Park and the noise associated there, too. All in favor of the amendment, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You guys have it 7-0. Okay, back to the main motion. Seeing, again, we're on the preliminary plat, seeing no further discussion, although in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it. We'll now move to the final plat, and Brett, you've covered that. And are there any comments from the public on the final plat, or comments from the applicant on the final plat? Seeing none. As for motion on the final plat?
I move, final plat.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. I have a motion, Vice Mayor Cavalier, and a second from Councilmember Antoniac. Discussion on the final plat.
Question I have is on parking. What, what has been said about visitor parking in the area?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Sousa, there are, just to give you a background of the amount of parking throughout the development, 37 of the units will have one-car garage, while 22 will have a two-car garage. And then there's a total of 122 parking spaces provided throughout the site, which is, essentially, it's enough for, to park two vehicles for each unit throughout the development.
Those people have to park today. What do you do with visitors?
That's, that was one of the items that was discussed as it went through the review process. The applicant has, as I mentioned before, some of the units only have one space in the garage. The applicant has provided, is proposing to provide some pocket areas with parking in these areas.
Do you feel that that would suffice for visitation?
Staff, staff believed that it would be sufficient for this type of development. Overall, the amount of parking was adequate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Antoniac? Mr. Mayor, I think we need the same amendment on this, so if you'll entertain me, I'll move that we amend stipulation number 16 to reflect Arizona Motor Sports Park as well.
Okay. I should have mentioned that before we took the motion. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Antoniac and a second from Councilmember Sousa to amend 16 as we did on the preliminary plat, although in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
You guys have it 7-0. Any further, Councilmember Lord, did you raise your hand?
No, no, I was just referring to the, he did it for me, thank you.
Behave yourself. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's fine.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, although in favor of the motion to approve the final plat, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it 7-0. Okay, we'll now move to the preliminary agreement with Lipsco for diversion of wastewater flow, and I believe Sean's gonna take this one.
This will be my first time using Almos, you'll need to bear with me. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, council members. Before you tonight is the authorization to approve the city manager to enter into an agreement with Lipsco, Litchfield Park Service Company, to temporarily provide wastewater services for the two northwest parcels of land in the city of Goodyear. They are represented by parcel number 22 and 23. We feel that a ward of this contract will permit the city to serve the development north of I-10. These improvements will allow for the continued development. We have been approached by numerous developers looking to start construction, and in order for the city to service them, we would need to enter into this agreement, or that development would need to wait until such a point that the city had infrastructure in place.
Sean, can you zoom out just a little bit? Is that Camelback on the north?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Indian School, I'm sorry, Indian School, it's Cotton Lane, Citrus, and Perryville. So it's north of Indian School, south of Camelback. The dark blue color is the Litchfield Park service territory for wastewater, and the light blue is the city of Goodyear's current service territory. This map, it's, I apologize, it's the best one that I had. The colored lines at the bottom, this is McDowell Road, this is our existing wastewater infrastructure. You can see that we do not move in the northerly direction, that's why we would need a temporary agreement with Lipsco. The term of the agreement would be for up to 36 months, at which point, if the city did not have wastewater infrastructure in place, the CCN of the service territory rights would revert to Lipsco. The Water Resources Department is in the process of designing wastewater lines to convey that wastewater into our collection system and treat it at the 157th. We would add this project to our '07, '08 capital budget, and make an amendment at that time within a year from now, so we will be moving forward to provide service. If the city does, if, the city would be a bulk wastewater purchaser, we would, excuse me, payer, we would pay Lipsco a rate of $2.60 per thousand, and then we would charge and bill our customers on an individual basis.
Sean, do we have other major territories north of I-10 that we service from a wastewater point of view?
No, just, just these five parcels listed in light blue. We do have a small section north of the I-10, essentially between Pebble Creek and Litchfield Road. But this is our current service territory. That concludes my comments, I didn't know if you had any questions.
We do provide not just water, but wastewater right there, that I-10.
Yes, there's a small, this small section here is also our water territory.
I knew it's water, I didn't know it was wastewater.
Correct.
Okay. Opportunity for the public, any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Gary Yelzer, 14971 West Pinchot Avenue. Mayor and council, I'm sure you're aware of the current issues with Lipsco's wastewater treatment facility. Over the last five or six months, the lack of odor control has been significant, especially at night, and it has been demonstrated. While these flows will not increase Lipsco's, you know, amount that it has to treat over the next year because infrastructure has to be moved, I just want to put on public record that Lipsco, when they built the facility on Indian School Road at the, in Palm Valley, they basically said to us that this would not be a smelling facility. And here we are, four or five years later, and we have a problem. Now, they have, Lipsco has alluded to a maintenance issue, and they say they will be taking care of it, and I just want to go on the record that this, you know, is now under, it always was a private company, it's changed hands, it's now a Canadian private company, and the pristine waters of our northern neighbor, we should be able to smell the same effluent that they do. So I want to go on record for that, and I want you to take that into consideration during your deliberation. Thank you very much.
And just one correction, the plant's on McDowell. But thank you, okay? On the record, comments, as modified. Okay, further comments from the public? Okay, comments, questions? No, I need a motion. Could I have a motion from the council, please?
Motion, council, approve an agreement between the city of Goodyear, Litchfield Park Service Company, temporary diversion of portion of the wastewater flow from the city of Goodyear wastewater service area to Lipsco water reclamation facility for treatment and disposal.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Holland, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Sousa?
John, where it says fiscal impact on the COAC, that the amount was left blank, that the $2.60 you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right in front of the question. Councilmember Antoniac?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to quickly address the public comment, I think both you and I sat at a meeting, and I have a feeling that Commissioner Chris Mays has her hands wrapped around this and is definitely going to address it from an ACC standpoint, and I think we both got that assurance. And I think we both got that assurance at the, at the neighborhood meeting, if you will, that they held just last week. So from my experience, having worked in the same industry in the state, she's not going to let go of it. So I have all the faith that she's going to serve us well and fix and rectify the problems if they don't do it themselves.
Hey, I agree with you.
And if not, that she'll address it in a rate case with them.
As I said, she's impressive and she's, she won't accept anything less than...
No, she won't.
Full compliance. Sean, back to Councilmember Antoniak and I and you and Jim attending that meeting. They, Lipsco said that they're about seventy-one percent of capacity on their wastewater treatment plant. And there's a lot going in in Palm Valley, north of Indian School. And there's obviously a lot going on in the county, et cetera. Lipsco has a lot coming to it. I understand this makes a lot of sense on paper, but when are we going to have a capacity problem there? We're, we're close to one now and are we exacerbating it? And are we going to have a problem with our folks?
Sean, you might have the applicant, John Keenam's here, he could give a schedule for when their flows are going to impact and how that fits the schedule of us constructing.
Mayor Kavanaugh, my name is John Keenam. I'm Director of Development for Meritage Homes. Our schedule is to start construction in about two months. Our sales will start in January of two thousand and seven. And probably people living in there are not going to be until in the last quarter of two thousand and seven. And our sales will be starting from our movies, two thousand, late two thousand and seven, and then through middle of two thousand and nine.
And I appreciate that and we really want Meritage in there because you've been very helpful to us. But I'm concerned about the wastewater flows north of I-ten into this Lipsco that we're exacerbating by putting Meritage and others on that link. Basically, when, when we were at the meeting, Lipsco does not have a plan of attack to expand. They have a concept and they know they need to, but they express, we don't know what we're going to do.
Mr. Mayor, Sean, is it not true that the intent is to have our pipeline constructed in, beginning July oh-seven?
Yes.
And completed in spring oh-eight?
Yes.
Thus, basically the model homes and maybe a couple of sales will have only occurred by the time our, our line is in and therefore it'll, it'll terminate the Lipsco connection.
For planning purposes, based off of historical usage that we see at our Corgit and our one fifty-seventh water reclamation facilities, the dwelling units produce on average two hundred and twenty gallons per day of wastewater effluent. So based off of, if they were to get to even five hundred homes within, within the time period between now and when the city's infrastructure was in place, that would equate to approximately a hundred and ten thousand gallons per day. And based off of Lipsco's current capacity at seventy-two percent of a four million gallon or four point one million gallon water reclamation facility, that would equal less than ten, well, approximately ten percent of their available capacity. And Lipsco feels that they are in a position to be able to treat that.
Yeah, my concern then with Councilmember Antoniak is that we know what we're going to do, we know what they're doing now, but we don't know what they're going to be doing in Litchfield Park and in the county.
Agreed.
And I think we probably need to know that. Councilmember Antoniak?
Ask a question. Is there an industry, and this may address your concern, but is there an industry standard at which a wastewater treatment plant starts to plan for the next phase?
As stated in the meeting that both the mayor and Councilmember Antoniak attended, seventy-five percent, some states mandate that. Arizona, that was, the ACC felt that that wasn't mandated, seventy-five percent, they have to enter into design, which would allow for them to design, construct and then operate a water reclamation facility. But a two-year timeline is, is, you know, from, from start to finish, soup to nuts. So that would give them sufficient time.
Yes, sir. They can't be at more than eighty-five percent capacity, can they?
No, they're at seventy-one right now.
I know, but, I mean, well, that was our standard, I thought. Well, what is full capacity allowed by the state, by the county or wherever?
I would have to defer to county. I'm not sure. I would assume it would be one hundred percent. They have to be able to maintain, the, the system is rated for average daily flows as well as a peak flow. So there's a peaking factor that's placed upon individual wastewater treatment plants. Ours is one point five five peak on an SBR, which is their treatment process, not to get overly technical, but they use a, an SBR process, which is sequential batch reactors, where they batch their treatment, they, it's like baking cookies, you wait and then you do it all at once. It's probably not a good analogy, but you get the idea, batch.
But they, they use the peaking point?
Correct.
For their capacity.
They have, they have storage, they have storage in place that will allow them to store the excess, the peak flow, and then they batch it one at a time.
What can we do to encourage them to push this forward?
They are planning on entering into design and expansion or alternative capacity within the third quarter of this year, that's been stated to me on numerous occasions and was stated to the ACC in the meeting last week.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Yeah, I, I guess I was getting at, I thought, I remembered from our discussions when we expanded our plant, and this is prior to you being here, Sean, so I apologize for putting you on the spot. But I thought there was a threshold that we reached eighty or eighty-five percent, we had to be under design, ninety, ninety-five percent, you better be under construction, otherwise the county was going to come out and start tagging you. And I would assume corporation would fall under the same type of...
The, the ACC felt that theirs was a little more stringent and they were seventy-five percent.
And I'm not ever eating cookies that come from your house when you bring them in.
Fair enough. Really noted.
Is, is it imperative that, from the standpoint of the process here, that this be approved today?
Yes, in order for the development community to continue. They have infrastructure in place, they're looking for a service connector to tie into.
I, I understand. I, I just don't feel like we've got all the data we need to approve this. I'm not worried about us as much as I'm worried about the, the ancillary stuff coming out of Litchfield Park and all the county.
Well, it's important, excuse me, I'm, go ahead.
I was gonna, I was just gonna ask or maybe state what I thought and you guys confirm. The ACC at any time can stop issuing permits for them to have connections. And so if this gets to a situation of no resolution or out of compliance, they can say cease and desist. And if they don't, there's...
But what we learned the other day that they weren't providing ACC with current data, remember? ACC was quite upset about that.
And I would venture to guess that they'd probably have visited by now by somebody.
Yeah.
Agreed.
But controls are in place.
Well, I think it's important to, to note that the city is committed to building and designing a, a water line to convey, excuse me, a wastewater line to convey that. And I would expect that that would be in, within six months of, of start of construction. It's only a mile to two miles up from where we need to get to, to meet their infrastructure. And we could do that in a relatively quick period of time.
My, my problem is not the city's line. Chris, did you want to say something?
Yes, Mayor and Council. In discussions with the, Chris Hendricks with the USI Program Management on behalf of the city, the, in discussions with the developers, the plan for these two sections is approximately fourteen hundred equivalent dwelling units. The city staff has reviewed and is, has used about two hundred and fifty gallons per day per, per unit. And at fourteen hundred units times, excuse me, two hundred and twenty gallons per unit, that's about three hundred and eight thousand gallons per day of capacity. To kind of frame that for you, the, the facility at seventy-one percent of four million gallons per day is two point eight four million gallons, leaves them with one point one six. And their plan is to begin in oh-seven, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but there, they will begin in oh-seven, and it's about a five-year plan. And they'll figure about three hundred homes per year. So at, at that rate and with the budget to, to move forward with installation of this, design and construction of the sewer line, the amount of flow that would come to the, would be diverted to the, to the facility in conjunction with the plan from, from the development would be a fairly minimal impact on, on the amount of flow that would be sent there to Lipsco.
Mayor Kavanaugh, would you recommend that the city work with the development and the developer to work on an alternative to accelerate the connection of the Goodyear infrastructure into their development to minimize the timeline that we have to rely upon Lipsco? We can meet with them.
Well, that's, that's a good idea. But, and, and I think you're going to do that.
Yes.
But, and accelerate that is great, but I, I'm just concerned and I don't want to hold this up, but I, I don't think that we have assurance from Lipsco, I met with them, that they can handle the, the inflow over the next two years, which is probably going to be before they really have something additional, a couple million gallons of capability. I just don't know, I don't feel confident that they have a feel for all the developments coming into them. We're a small part of it, not a small part of it, but our addition is a small part of it. I agree with you, Chris. But what's happened in, in the county, there's a heck of a lot of development in the county that's coming to Lipsco. Toll Brothers and all those others in Litchfield Park, they're all flowing down there. And I guess, does Litchfield Park Service Company, have they confirmed to us that this is doable?
They've signed.
Without question.
They've signed the agreement.
And, and they're ready to, and they're ready to assume the responsibility for that.
Yes.
Do we have that in writing?
Yes. And, and we can meet, Water Resources will meet with them to confirm that and, and we can ask them to give us a schedule for expansion and development within their system so that we can get a better handle on their timeline and how quickly their one point six, or excuse me, their one point one million gallons of excess capacity will be used. What's their absorption rate?
Can we get a quarterly, at least a quarterly report back on the progress?
Absolutely.
So that we know what's going on.
And it, it will be mastermated from the city's standpoint so that we can give you a definitive answer on...
No, we, we want to know from the Lipsco perspective, what's the inflow of Lipsco?
No, agreed, agreed, that's doable.
That's what we need to know.
No problem.
So that if in fact they aren't expanding soon enough, we can apprise them of that thing.
Yes.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Make one other suggestion or observation here, Mayor, and that's that they're also in a proceeding to expand their CCNN or their service territory and that any individual is able to comment on that during either open public comment hearing or file a letter as it relates to the rate case. And I'm sure the commission would be, it would, independent of the seven of us acting, a letter from City Hall would be very well received, I'm sure, and paid attention to. Might be encouraged during, during their proceeding for, for you to do that.
Councilmember Souza? Can we take into consideration the amount of development that's, that's going on north of Indian School all the way to Camelback in the Palm Valley areas?
As far as our service territory, Lipsco's.
Lipsco. Because they're, they're building tremendous amount of...
And that would, I mean, that would be Lipsco's responsibility, but we can, we can get a status report from them on their absorption schedule so we can, so the city can get assurances, additional assurances from them.
I would think that would be an additional stress, you know, on, on their ability to to treat.
Agreed. These, I, I think based on what the developer has stated tonight, we'd be looking at somewhere around three to five hundred houses, which would be sixty to one hundred thousand gallons of wastewater per day. An additional burden placed upon their system.
For a short duration.
For, for a very short duration. And that's not a very large quantity of flow when you have one point one million gallons available today.
Right, and Sean didn't, I mean, you said a little earlier, that's only ten percent of Lipsco's available capacity.
Correct.
For a short period of time.
And they have, they have now committed this flow to their calculations and now we have, that, that flow and that capacity has been reserved in their treatment plan with this agreement.
Well, yeah, and listening to what the mayor says certainly sets up some red, red flags from where I stand then. See some, some resolution comes.
Yeah, I think what we, at least I have a couple of us here, we're concerned, but we want to make sure the city that Lipsco has a handle on the next couple of years on the inflow from the city of Goodyear, from Litchfield Park, from the county.
We, we will work with Lipsco to get those assurances from Mayor and Council.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, as for both, please, all those in favor of the motion to have an agreement with Lipsco, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, guys have it seven zero. We'll now move to preliminary plat for Palm Valley Phase Six, Perimeter West One. Brett?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the preliminary, the Perimeter West preliminary plat is approximately two hundred and fifty-two acres. It's generally located east of Cotton Lane, west of the Luke three oh three, north of Indian School Road and south of Camelback Road. This aerial photo exhibit that I have shows that to Camelback Road and undeveloped agricultural land to the north, there's Indian School Road and undeveloped agricultural land to the south, the three oh three freeway and undeveloped agricultural zone land to, to the east and Cotton Lane. And there's a small strip of light industrial zoned land running north and south that contains a small number of businesses. The zoning for Perimeter West was approved on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and five. As the council may recall, Perimeter West is located almost entirely within the Luke Air Force Base accident potential zones. Suncor has met with representatives from Luke Air Force Base regarding the potential uses for Phase Six, Perimeter West, and Luke representatives have provided Suncor with direction on acceptable industrial land uses with a small commercial component. This is a land use exhibit. It shows that of the two hundred and fifty-two acres, there will be thirty-eight lots and six tracks. The, the orange areas shown on the exhibit are light industrial, there's two hundred and two acres. The, the red portion of the exhibit would be commercial, there's ten acres. There's also a eleven acre public facilities district, which is in yellow, which is for a future APS substation. The access points, there's one on Camelback Road, there's one on Indian School Road, you can see that there's three on Cotton Lane. Suncor has reported that due to interest in, in this property, the timing to move this site forward to development is favorable. Suncor has indicated that after, that they plan to construct an approximately four hundred and fifty thousand square foot industrial building in this subdivision after paying approvals from the city. A copy of the preliminary plat was sent to Luke Air Force Base for review and comment, and Luke Air Force Base reported that they will accept the preliminary plat as submitted. And as you will note in, in the staff report, the preliminary plat contains stipulations regarding Luke Air Force Base. And specifically, it, it notes that Luke Air Force Base will have an opportunity to provide written comment on all industrial land uses prior to the issuance of a building permit. Overall, the preliminary plat is consistent with the Palm Valley Master Plan and with the, the city of Goodyear's general plan. This case was presented to the Planning Commission on June twenty-first, two thousand and six. At the meeting, the commissioner has asked Mr. Ellingson if freeway pylon signs were proposed for the subdivision as it's adjacent to the three oh three freeway. Mr. Ellingson responded that it is not yet known what would be requested for signage. He noted that a comprehensive sign package for the entire industrial center will be submitted to the city, which will contain the design for the building mounted and any, any freeway or monument signage in the subdivision. The preliminary plat was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission with the vote of six to zero. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Jay Ellingson with Suncor is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the applicant, Mr. Ellingson, you want to say anything now?
Mayor, members of the council, Jay Ellingson, Suncor...
Mayor, members of the council, Jay Ellingson, Suncor Development, 14130 West McDowell Road. My comments are very brief, and they go to the direction of trying to work with Luke Air Force Base and the impacts that we are trying not to have on their mission. Everything that we've done before we submit to the city is to review with Luke the potential uses, the opportunities for development, although limited, that it will be compatible with their missions and their flying schedules. I will tell you that from the preliminary plat to the final plat, you'll see that there will be, for example, these four lots in this area will become one lot to support a large building that we're, we have under design right now. That would be a cross-stock distribution building. That means they take product in on one side, they either break it down or put something together and take it out the other side. There's a great need for that in terms of utilization of the access points for the ports in California, both the Long, or the LA port, and also the Long Beach port, that are at capacity in terms of buildings that are available for this type of operation. So, we think it's certainly market-driven and something that we're very committed to, and we think it'd be a great utilization of this land that's available in Goodyear.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move that we approve the pre-plat for Palm Valley Phase 6, Perimeter West, subdividing approximately 252 acres into 38 lots and six tracks, generally located east of Cotton Lane, west of Loop 303, north of Indian School, and south of Camelback.
Okay, a motion, a motion for Councilmember Antoniak, and a second for Councilmember Souza. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Souza?
You just discussed the four lots that are gonna become one, okay? And that's going to be, you're gonna construct a 450,000 square foot building there?
Approximately, maybe 430,000.
Yeah, if you ever take, yeah. How many employees do you think will be in that type of environment?
Councilmember Souza, it's, it's not very intense in that type of building. A lot of those buildings can be automated, and it just doesn't require a whole lot until the specific uses are there. In terms of the parking ratios that we've demonstrated to the city, and we amended in terms of the parking codes, there aren't a lot of employees associated with that type of facility.
You know, the reason I ask that question is that Luke has always been concerned about the number of employees that are in, that are in that potential accident area. And even when we first went into the discussion of the type of construction and your type of buildings you were gonna put in that area, that came up, and I just want to make sure that, you know, that you run into a snag somewhere along the line brought on by Luke because you have too many employees for them to deal with.
We certainly hope not. In every consideration in terms of the type of facility, this is kind of the minimal amount of employees that you can have in terms of the square footage of a building. So, there are, there are no major office facilities within the building. It's mostly break it down, build it up, take it out.
Rather than being repetitious, in item 20, here again, we refer to Luke Air Force Base and the noise flights in that area and the noise that is contained, would you be open to including the Arizona Motor Park in that noise of item area?
It's not residential in nature.
Well, I know it's not, but just to protect the city in the long run. You did get complaints about it, and at least we're on, on record of saying that.
I'm not opposed, but as I was discussing earlier with Brett and with the previous applicant, we don't know what the status of the Arizona Motor Park will be, but it does say in the stipulations that have been written in other sections of Phase 5 that it may be. If we keep the same language, I'm not opposed to that. But this isn't residential in nature, and I don't imagine that it would even be brought up, so whatever you'd like to do.
Probably be more noise going on inside the breakdown facility than, yeah.
It's a strong possibility.
Vice Mayor? Just a question, Jay, on this, realize the last crash we had, an F-16 was in that area, and if it did happen again, and the building was there, is that, I mean, there was not much we could do about it, but is that consideration for how many people would be in that building if an F-16 came down in that area? Or any of those buildings? I mean, that's a concern I have, I'm really afraid that it was up there when that F-16 came down, and it was right there.
Mayor, Councilmember Cavalier, I don't want to discount the possibility, I'm not gonna get into the percentage chances. I was meeting with Max Wilson, County Supervisor Max Wilson, this afternoon, and we had a discussion, and I'm still, I hope I wait a long time, but there's, there hasn't been a crash in the crash zone yet. That, that crash that happened up north of Camelback was outside of the crash zone. So, they can, they can crash anywhere.
It was just north, but it was just next to 303, and it wasn't in the crash zone?
It was not in the crash zone. So, I don't want to, it's a, it's a possibility, that's why we have to go into acceptable uses in terms of what can be built. If you look in the flight patterns of both any major airport, but Sky Harbor particularly, you will see the types of facilities that are there. In some cases, it's, it's a lot more intense, where you have call centers and other things than what's being proposed here. So I don't know what else to propose, other than something that has very limited personnel involved in the operation.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signified by stating aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, 7-0. Now move to adoption of ordinance to rezone 30 acres south of McDowell, nearby the mall. Steve, you got it?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a 30 acre parcel that is owned by Globe Land Investors. To the north, we have the Goodyear Plan Regional Center, PAD. To the west, we have property owned by the Flood Control District that encompasses Third Wash. To the south is Interstate 10, and to the east, we have property owned by a private landowner and then Bullard Avenue. Our request tonight is to rezone the property to Final PAD and to include it in the Goodyear Plan Regional Center by adding it as parcel 14. And this is parcel 14 there. As a part of the PAD, will be signed a land use designation of mixed-use commercial. With that land use, he'll be permitted to develop with commercial uses as designated in the PAD, with the exception that car washes and drive-through restaurants will acquire a use permit, and that is proposed as stipulation number 27. That change there. No specific uses have yet been proposed for the property. However, should West Core acquire the parcel from Globe, they will likely be bringing forward a request for freeway pylons along Interstate 10. However, that request is not a part of tonight's rezoning application, and any freeway pylon proposal for this property would require a use permit, which would require review by, by the Planning Commission and ultimate approval from the City Council. Today's staff has not received any adverse public comment on this proposal. Luke Air Force Base has commented, and they state that this development will not have any adverse impact on their flight operations. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the general plan and compatible with the surrounding area. As such, staff and the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this request, subject to 27 stipulations. With that, Mr. Mayor, my presentation is completed. I'm available for any questions. Mr. Ed Bull, on behalf of the property owners, also here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the applicant? Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. If I need to make a presentation, I will. We're here in good shape with recommendations from the commission and staff. We agree with all their stipulations. It's merely an expansion of what was long ago approved by the city. If you're in good shape, I'm happy to sit down and we request your approval in accordance with the commission and staff recommendations.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 06-1019, Ordinance to Adopt, Providing for Conditional Rezoning of 30 Acres of Land from the Agricultural District to the Final Plan Area Development Mixed-Use Commercial District for a Commercial Development Known as Parcel 14 of the Goodyear Plan Regional Center, Generally Located South of McDowell Road, Approximately 697 Feet West of Bullard Avenue. Amending Supplementary Zoning Map Number 06-613 to provide for the change in zoning, Providing Separability, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Councilmember Holland, would you make a motion, please?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 06-1019, as read by the clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Holland, and a second from Councilmember Scott. Open for discussion. Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see this rezoning on part of West Core, only for one reason, and that's to place three pylon signs on I-10. And again, here, I just heard from another developer that they anticipate three signs on 303. I don't know where they're coming up with this idea that they have the right to have three, three pylons, I don't know if you've got that. This property is the only access that they have for the placement of pylon signs that Adwood frequently advertise on, with short history of flaws. And that's the only reason that the request is being made, to rezone. And I'm going to vote no on this, basically for the same reason that I've done in the past year. I think there are too many, too many proposed pylon signs on I-10, and again, I'm concerned about this, and so I will be voting no on proposed acquisition or rezoning. Thank you.
No, thank you. Maybe someone remembers the pylon situation better than I do. What is the prerogative associated with owning the land versus not owning it for pylon I guess the point is, does it, does this put them in a much stronger position to get what they want on pylon signs?
Mayor, council, the issues regarding frontage on the freeway, 30 acre minimum and frontage on the freeway are the essential components to having a freeway pylon sign. The council recently amended the zoning code to provide for a use permission, use permit provision, so these pylon signs will be coming back before you for consideration. It, it would be difficult, you cannot, I guess, it would be very difficult to approve pylon signs without the property being contiguous to the freeway. They would be considered off-premise signs. That explains.
And do we, we still have the authority though not to approve a free, correct? We did.
Yes, that is correct.
Mayor, do you want me to answer the common ownership question?
Yes, sir.
Because the, back when we zoned all of this property in the original PAD, as you remember, the underlying landowner was a Globe, was a Globe entity with West Core as a proposed commercial developer and others, this is a residential developer.
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Back when the original PAD was approved, the underlying landowner was Globe, was the name of the company, and it's still Globe, it's Globe Land Investors now, it went through a name change in the past few years. But be that as it may, the underlying landowner then and now was Globe, and West Core is the proposed commercial developer. Subsequent to the PAD for this whole area being approved, Globe acquired this 30 acres, and it's anticipated that Globe will have a relationship on these 30 acres, like its developed and developing relationships with West Core on the other mixed-use parcels and the mall piece and so on. The current landowner is Globe Land Investors, just like the current landowner of the other commercial properties and the bigger picture's the PAD, is still Globe Land Investors. As Harvey indicated, and as Rob Bassett, who's from here, West Core could agree to on the record if you need to, West Core fully appreciates that if they continue to, and they do desire to have pylon signs along the freeway frontage, and that issue was discussed here several months ago in the context of another case in a council work session and so on. But that will be a separate application that West Core will be, is submitted for some staff consideration, and someday will be coming through the commission and council processes. But today, what we're really requesting, for a whole host of reasons, having to do with getting the property zoned consistent with the general plan, a proposed improvement district that will, if approved, put assessments on this property as well, so we need to know what it can be used for, and so on and so forth, there's a number of reasons why we believe the zoning is appropriate, is consistent with the general plan, and we hope would be approved tonight in accordance with the recommendations that are in front of you. Then someday, West Core's proposed comprehensive sign plan will be in front of the City Council for your council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask, are there any comments from the public? Could I ask the clerk to read the ordinance by, by the law, please?
令喲61019, Providing for Conditional Rezoning of 30 Acres of Land from the Agricultural District to the Final Plan Area Development Mixed-Use Commercial District for a Commercial Development Known as.
Why, why avoid it real quick? There's a motion on the table here. Oh, we've done that?
Dean was being polite, didn't want to correct you.
You want a second?
Yeah, we've got, we've got the motion.
You weren't polite, though, you did correct.
Well, I, I know. Never been beside, decided me to correct somebody.
We have a motion, a second on it also.
Okay, that's right, that's the one I screwed up first, right? All right, I have trouble with this. I apologize. Okay, any further discussion, then? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would just hope that, that this property is really an entryway to the, as far as view, an entryway to the, the West Core Center on McDowell. The problem I see, we don't want something that's like what's happening over in our neighboring city, where there's a lot of big office buildings going in, and their pylon signs and everything else that they put in on McDowell is being covered up, and the big buildings, three and four-story buildings are covering up everything that's on McDowell behind it. So their shopping center will eventually be covered up. I would hope that that doesn't happen in this property. I don't know if you can, if you even know height of those buildings or what will be there, but it would, we would not want to obstruct the view of our, our center or our West Core Mall, and I would hope that that would be a consideration that the company would take very seriously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further comment, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the?
Roll call.
Roll call. Okay.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
No.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Six, one.
Okay, if we could do one more, then we can take a break, is that all right, is everybody? Okay. We'll now have a public here. We'll now have a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution for a special public improvement project. Open the public hearing.
Mayor, council, members of the audience. The public hearing is for consideration of formation of a special improvement area for cost recovery purposes for water infrastructure in the area generally located in the north by Interstate Ten, on the south by MC eighty-five, roughly Cotton Lane on the east, and Perryville Road on the west. This particular area was part of the memorandum of understanding that the council entered into in May of two thousand and five for the purpose of facilitating infrastructure development and financial contributions to the city to allow this area to develop with city-type services. There's two items on tonight's agenda that are related, that are companion. This first one is regarding water facilities, regional water lines. The, I believe, item O later on the agenda is regarding wastewater collection lines, which is just the sister to this particular resolution. This is a resolution of intention to formal cost recovery program. This program was modified in the memorandum of understanding as well as in subsequent development agreements with several of the sixteen property owners that have come before you with annexation, zoning, and platting purposes. The purpose in the, in the cost recovery program is the engineer for the applicant or the, the property owners within this area have prepared a master water study, was prepared by Cohen Van Lu, engineering consultants, and approved by the city engineer, and has designated or identified several regional water lines that need to be constructed within this area. And those water lines are identified on the exhibit that are attached. These are a list of the sixteen property owners. The water lines are regional water lines, as I indicated, and one of the developers or one or more developers may front some of this infrastructure, and this individual will be, or this developer will be paying the upfront costs for this infrastructure and needs a mechanism to allocate the cost of that to several property owners and then receive reimbursement back for those properties that are benefited by that infrastructure. And that's the primary purpose in the cost recovery. And as per the cost recovery ordinance that the council adopted, there is a provision that there be a thirty-day notice before the public hearing. So thirty days prior to this notice, staff sent out notices to the property owners that are participating in the cost recovery program, identifying how much their allocated costs are for each of the water lines that are being proposed, as well as the maximum amounts that they are obligated to. And those are reflected in the exhibit. The total estimated, or the total maximum allocated cost are approximately four point eight million dollars. Originally, it was five point two, I believe, in the COAC. One of the lines, item H on exhibit C, letter H, I'm sorry, letter H or item H, was eliminated, and that reduced the overall cost from five point two million to four point eight million. So the maximum amount that the property owners within this cost recovery program have liability for is four million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, sixty million dollars, and it is , the allocation of those costs are provided on exhibit C, which has percentages of each of those particular lines for each of those properties. The purpose in the public hearing is to give those property owners, after they receive notice of these costs, to one, question the cost or question the allocation or the amount of benefit that they would receive from this infrastructure. The reimbursements that would be provided to the original developer who fronts this, well, once the developer has constructed this, then the actual cost will actually be reimbursed to the various property owners, or will be actually, they will actually collect money from the other property owners and would receive credit towards the development fee for the wastewater development fee. There's no interest paid on the, on the amount that is upfronted by a developer for these infrastructure costs, per the ordinance, and there's no financial liability to the city for this program. The only liability the city has is administering this program, and the developers that are participating in the cost recovery have, will be paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city to administer the cost recovery program. I believe that concludes my comments. Available to answer your questions, I believe, the representative of the West Goodyear Central Planning Area who helped put this together primarily instrumental in putting this together is here as well, and I believe our assistant city engineer is also here to answer any specific questions you might have. That concludes, and this is a public hearing, and so there are maybe public members, members of the public that would like to speak on this.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public for comment. Okay, close the public hearing. Ask the clerk to read the resolution by title, please.
Resolution 06-1064, approving and establishing a special public improvement project area, which area benefits from those special improvement, special public improvements associated with the installation of regional water delivery mains servicing the West Goodyear Central Planning Area. Within the city of Goodyear, which special public improvements will be funded and installed by owners or developers of property within this W G C P area, and authorizing the city to recover a proportionate allocated cost for these regional water delivery mains from the owners of the identified benefited property upon their development and the reimbursement of those costs to the owners of or developers who financed and installed the water delivery mains and establish an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept resolution number 06-1064. Is everybody in court?
Okay, thank you. Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Souza. Opportunity for the applicant. Before we go to the discussion, any comments from the applicant?
Yeah, any questions?
Okay, it's open for discussion. Any council? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the question I have is the administration fee for this, will this mean we will have to hire additional people to administer this, or is this built into the system we have and be able to do it without hiring more people?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the finance office has obtained the services of Muni Finance, I believe is the name of the firm, has developed some software in California, and they will be, we're contracting with them to work with the finance department, engineering, as well as community development. Of course, we'll be feeding them the information. They will, they will provide this database, and we'll have access to this database online. So we do not anticipate any additional staff, and the funds that we're collecting should cover the cost of...
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, that should cover the cost.
Okay, that's more of a concern.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Sfat?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero passed.
Okay, we moved to J K and L, and they've been pulled from the agenda. I should also add that the last two items on the agenda, R and S, have been pulled, correct?
J K and L have been pulled.
J K and L have been pulled?
J K L have been pulled from the agenda. R and S have been pulled from the agenda. R and S are the last two. So we've got, we've got five to go.
N through Q.
And two of those will be handled together. Would you like to take a quick break?
Yeah.
Okay. How about, say, nine, ten, is that all right? Options of resolution?
Oh.
Pardon me, you got it? Open the public hearing.
Mayor, Council, this is, what I just said about water, it applies to wastewater. Same as I did though. The only, yeah, that's the manager. The only thing I'd like to clarify is the numbers on the, on the COAC are correct. The number in the exhibit was wrong. We're talking about over $22 million of total probable cost rather than 20 million. On two of the lines that are in the exhibit, the cost was increased by significantly. We actually got bids on those costs. So one went from five million, quite five million, to seven million, and other went up another, um, quite a bit. So that's the reason. So the total estimated cost of all the wastewater collection lines is 22 million. If you have any questions, I'm available for comment.
Okay, thank you. We're on O. We'll give the couple because of the relationship to the last one. Pardon me?
Open up the public hearing and ask the public to...
I think I did open it, didn't I? I did. Okay, uh, public comments. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And ask clerk to read the resolution by title only. Again, this is O.
Resolution 06-1065. Resolution approving and establishing a special public improvement project area, which area benefits from those special public improvements associated with the regional wastewater truck line improvements servicing the West Goodyear Central Planning Area within the city of Goodyear, which special public improvements will be funded and installed by owners or developers of property within the WGCP area and authorizing the city to recover a proportionate allocated cost for those regional wastewater truck line improvements from the owners of the identified benefited property upon their development and the reimbursement of those costs to the owners or developers who financed and installed the improvements and establishing an effective date.
Hey, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept resolution number 06-1065 as read by the court.
Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Souza. Any comments from the applicant? Okay. Opportunity for the council now, discussion. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for roll call vote.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass seven, zero.
Thank you. Now, we'll go back to M and N, and they're gonna be discussed together. Rick Williams will do that, and after them, then we'll move to P and Q. Okay? Rick, you got it? And we're talking about Padera, right?
Yes, sir, we are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before you tonight is the final planned area development and the preliminary plat. For a development known as Padera, which is roughly 160.4 acres, and it's located on the northwest corner here of Lower Buckeye and Citrus Road. This over here would be 183rd Avenue, and this would be the Durango Street alignment there to the north. The general plan map gives us a designation of a low-density residential, which is a two-to-four dwelling units per acre with the baseline density being two. The applicant is a participating member of the memo of understanding, which gives them a .85 bonus and would make that baseline density then 2.85. Padera proposes this evening a density of 3.13. Development proposes a total of 471 single-family residential lots, with 114 of those being of the Courthouse home product. They're proposing three lot sizes in this development, 60 by 125, 70 by 130s, and then the Courthouse home product as well. Access will be provided to the development through four entrances into it, with one located situated here on Citrus Road, another two in there on Durango Street, west of 183rd, and Lower Buckeye in that location. Padera offers 26 percent of open space, of which it's located around a nine-and-a-half acre central park that's located right there in the center of the development. They offer a wide range of amenities, including ball fields, shaded Ramadas picnic areas. And I would also point out that along the western portion of the development is a continuation of the multi-use regional equestrian trail that we've seen come from the developments to the north. Two citizen review meetings were held on this development, one May 18th, the other June 13th, which produced two prominent issues with regards to this development. County residents eagerly participated in the citizen review meetings and basically, what came out of that was a reluctance, or I'm sorry, reluctance is not the correct word. They just really didn't want to see the Durango Street alignment proceed all the way through to Citrus. They also had concerns with regards to Castillo Lane and access from Durango Street. And I would just direct your attention to this. Headed up this direction right here is an RID access road that the Castillo family has deemed Castillo Lane. Subsequent conversations with the RID and with Mr. Myers, Standard Pacific Homes produced an agreement to, to construct a crash gate, so to speak, in this location, basically mitigating any traffic that would proceed from Durango Street north up to, to Citrus. We took this before the, the Planning and Zoning Commission on, oop, one second, on June 21st, 2006, and they recommended approval of this unanimously. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 26-291, rezoning this 160 acres, as well as the preliminary plat that you have in front of you this evening, subject to the stipulations that are contained within the staff reports. That concludes my presentation this evening. Mr. Gary Myers of Standard Pacific Homes is here available and be happy to answer any questions, sir.
Would you just describe the crash gate?
I believe a crash gate is, is a, is a security-type gate that mitigates continuous traffic going through, but fire and police and others would be able to access through that in the event that they needed to cross that barrier and proceed north.
Not a lock gate?
I, I'm not that familiar with it, sir, but I mean, it is secured, but there is access to that.
Okay. So we've had the, you've done the rezone, and you've also done the preliminary plat, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, opportunity for comments from the public. Opportunity for comments from the applicant?
I'm glad to answer any questions if I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and when I said applicant and public, I was referring to both the plat and the ordinance, okay? Okay, ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 06-1021, providing for conditional rezoning of 160.40 acres of property from the agricultural urban zoning district to the final planned area development zoning district for residential development known as Padera, located at the northwest corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road. Amending supplementary zoning map number 06-006 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept ordinance 2006-1021 as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Scott, a second from Councilmember Antoniak. The ordinance, the rezoning, is open for discussion. Okay, seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass seven, zero.
Okay, moving to the preliminary plat, could I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat, please?
Don't move.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Souza and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion on the preliminary plat. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, now we're on P, and that is to consider adoption of an ordinance to set the primary and secondary, secondary property tax levies. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'm pleased to tell you that this is the last action on a long trail that started in October for you, where we started reviewing the budget process. June 12th, the City Council adopted the tentative budget. June 26th, the council held two public hearings, one on the final budget and another on the property tax for the truth in taxation. And then on June 26th, the City Council also adopted the final budget. In connection with that, the last action, ordinance number 06-1022, is the adoption of the property tax levy. The primary property tax levy is $3,561,044. The secondary property tax levy is $3,954,667. This is consistent with the amounts included in the budget and what we presented in our last discussion on June 26th. The total property tax rate to achieve that level meets the City Council's target of not to exceed $1.60 for the combined property tax. If there are any questions you may have.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the resol, the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 06-1022. Leaving upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Goodyear, subject to primary and secondary taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 valuation sufficient to raise the amounts estimated to be required in the annual budget for the purpose of paying for various expenses, to raise the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenues, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bonded indebtedness, all for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2007.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept ordinance 2006-1022 as read by the clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. It's open for discussion.
I would just commend staff for the record on shortest COACs in the city of Goodyear, sister.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass seven, zero.
Thank you. Okay, now this will be the last item on the agenda, and it's Q, and we'll consider the lease agreement with, is it Venida or Venita?
Venida.
Venida. And Larry Martinez?
Yeah, are you gonna present this? What do we got? Hey, Larry. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first off, I'd like to make a point of making a correction and clarification in the amount of square footage that is written in the council action form. It was an incorrect number that was given, and the correct number is 35,978 square feet. Initially, it was written as 32,722 square feet. I'd like to make that point at this time. I will get into the council action now. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item before you tonight is a request of council to approve the lease agreement for office space at the Benita Business Park, located in the area of 144th Avenue and Van Buren. And it's also a request of council to authorize city manager to enter into this agreement with Eric Cornell, owner of the Benita Business Park, for the city to lease two office buildings in that complex, consisting of the square footage of 35,978 square feet. From this point, I'd like to go into the fiscal responsibilities and fiscal impact of this agreement. The annual cost to lease the buildings is $669,000, 669,190 dollars and 80 cents for fiscal year 2006 to 2007. Funding is available this current year in the amount of $792,501 and 50 cents. This, the additional common area agreement calls for 29 cents a square foot, that covers the maintenance for the, for the parking area, wiring, sewer utilities, et cetera. That's gonna be estimated to come out to $125,000 and 23 cents, $23.44. Thought is, at this time, there will be approximately 109 parking spaces to begin with. At the end of the term, there should be 250 parking spaces to accommodate employees, visitors, staff, and so forth. That will be, that, that cost will be covered under this funding for the year. And the key to the funding is that the term of the, of the agreement is from November to December of, I'm sorry, November to October of next year. And for fiscal year, we do have that money available, since we're only, we're only gonna be paying for eight months of this, this year. So there's enough money in the funds to accommodate these costs. The benefits of acquiring this office space would be that staff would be, have more office space and space to store materials, and for the departments of engineering, planning and zoning, building safety, and police and fire administration staff. With these departments moving into these two new buildings, it will open up space in the areas vacated by those departments that were, that were being moved. As part of the complex, in the complex, the city would be, would be leasing buildings D and E of the complex. Building D will have 20,006,7 square feet, while building E will have 15,911 square feet. The departments will have the additional storage space for office meeting and, and parking areas to meet the current needs that they don't have right now in the current facilities. At the time of the move to lease facilities, or to lease office space, 109 employees from engineering, building safety, planning and zoning, police administration, fire administration will occupy those two buildings. There is additional space to add 70 more employees up to the next five years, if needed, even though this contract is for 39 and a half months, there's, there's still, for five, there's a five-year projection for 100 to house, to house up to 179 employees in these two buildings. The term of the contract, as I stated, was 39 and a half months, commencing in November 2006, and, and will be expiring in March of 2009. There is an option to extend the lease if needed. City staff has been in negotiation, there has been discussion with the property owner and some negotiations on purchasing, however, that those agreements couldn't be finalized. That agreement cannot be finalized. City staff will be, will be responsible, we'll, we'll have some maintenance responsibilities that include HVAC repair and so forth. And any, any tenant improvements will be passed on through the building owner, and there is an allowance for tenant improvements under the contract. And tonight... And tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have Jamie Curry from Deutsch Associates also here, and I think Darlene Turner, I don't know if she's here or not, Darlene Turner from Cornwell Corporation is representing Eric Cornwell, who is the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from Cornwell Corporation or Deutsch? Would you like, okay? Opportunity, if you wish, later.
Just a little more.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Okay, we'll need a motion to approve the lease agreement for office space at the Venida Business Park.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the lease agreement for office space at the Venida Business Park, located at 144th Avenue and Van Buren.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Scott. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Lord?
Yes, could you tell me, this figure you gave of $792,501.50, is the $20,000 included in it for the maintenance and the common areas and the parking space? Is that, is that in that figure, or is that additional to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lord, that is included in that amount.
Councilmember Scott?
I asked this question once before, and I don't think I got an answer, or maybe I forgot about it. I'll ask it again. Stephen, is there a significant cost savings to us leasing this as opposed to purchasing a building over a period of time? I mean, why are we doing it this way?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Scott, staff, as Larry had indicated, we did try to enter into a purchase arrangement, and we were not able to reach an agreement on that. So that's why we're coming forward strictly with the lease. In the big picture, ideally, yes, we should always try to buy buildings as opposed to leasing.
Thank you. I want to answer some questions.
At the time that we were in the negotiations, it was buy five buildings or no buildings. We were only in a position of looking at two of them. Because of the longer-term solution of the Yuma site.
Councilmember Sousa? I'm going to pick up on a word that the city manager said, get a position. We better get into a position to move ahead on the city center. I'll tell you what these kind of prices. I know the staff needs space. I don't, we just have to find some way to push the city center project along, but these rates are shocking.
I support you, Mayor.
That's all we're getting, is the two votes on here for support. We don't understand this. You know, that'll be a subject on a retreat, so maybe we can make some progress. Hope so. Further discussion? Just a couple questions. Was this designed to be a commercial or industrial piece?
Can you turn to the mic?
Darlene Turner with Cornwell Corporation. It's designed a multipurpose site. It can be office flex, it can be, you know, like we're using it for your facility, because we have parking, we have extra land we can park additional cars on. So it can be quasi-retail that's allowed within the zoning.
Okay, thank you. And the TIs, Larry, you went over that one, I missed your comment. You said something, but what are the TIs on this one?
There is an allowance for-
There is?
There is an allowance for tenant improvements in the lease agreement, and I'm not quite familiar with the lease agreement as far as tenant improvements, maybe, or city attorney.
I believe it's $30,000, Mr. Mayor. Is that right, $30,000, is that going to change? $30,000, you're changed, okay.
And what do you figure, come in about 50, then?
Sorry.
Yes, what do you think you'll come in at? In real tenant improvement. The allowance is 30. What's really going to cost us?
I'd say closer to 50, at this time, without having that information, we could find out for everything.
Lady in the back.
What was the figure? He isn't sure. They said 50. Of course.
Mayor and council, I'm with Deutsch Associates, and we're currently working with the directors of each department to design their spaces. Right now, they're in schematics. So Larry's estimate of $50 a square foot may be a fair number, but to be honest with you, that's going to take a little more development to be able to give you a firm number of the tenant improvement costs. Obviously, the police and fire administration departments have some security needs that wouldn't be in a normal office space, which will affect that.
In a memorandum we received just recently, they indicated there was going to be a library site in and around this location. Is it going to be a site, is it going to be a part of this, or?
I think that's a might be a library site.
Well, might, yeah, right. It's one of the three. But is this the area that they're talking about?
Councilmember Sousa, I don't know if Stephen wants to respond to that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Sousa, this is one of those sites that was under consideration, and the viability is partly limited by parking and by the amount of space needed for the first, if you're going to do it, we ought to be closer to 10,000 square feet.
So it would be another one of these buildings done, so.
Most likely. It depends on ultimately what Deutsch and Associates comes up with in terms of the first foreprint to get everybody in there. The initial 100, what'd you say, 197?
109 employees initially. And to be honest, as the representative from Cornwell was saying, this space was originally planned for an office and industrial use. So putting a library there is certainly not an ideal location. I mean, if that's what you're asking, it's possible, but not.
Somebody thought it was.
It's definitely possible.
I think it's one of three options, Mark. What, is that good?
It's good.
Yeah. Larry, I'm sorry, ma'am. What, how many square feet are we consuming in our city center?
Two stories. In our, the current city hall?
Mm-hmm, city hall.
So you have 38,000 square feet.
So this is the same size?
Pretty much. The first floor is 18,000 roughly, and the second floor is little more than 17,000.
Wow.
So you're getting the first floor in one of those buildings.
And what's the lease rate on a square foot basis on this? I didn't see it. If I missed it, I missed it.
$1.55, $1.55 per square foot.
Okay, that's a monthly, then? About 55 times 12 is what, 18, 19 bucks a foot, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
I think it's 1860 per foot, I think is what it works out annually.
Mayor, just for public record, when we talk about the library, there was quite a bit of concern the other night at the city center, that we were not going to put a library in the city center. So I don't want the public to get the idea that this is going to be the-
This was a temporary.
Yeah, I know, but because we're talking about it tonight, I just, anyway, listening in, I didn't want them to get that impression, because it was a big question the other night. Thank you.
Okay, where are we on that one? We've got, I guess it's now called for a vote on the lease agreement, is that correct? Okay, all those in favor of the lease agreement signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, now go to authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Eric Cornwell. And any further commentary, Larry, or is that it? Got it?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
I move that council authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Eric Cornwell.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Sousa, and a second.
Want me to keep on going?
No, you're good. Second from Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Changing 32,722 square feet to 35,978 square feet.
Okay, is that, that's-
That's the change. 35,978.
Don't move. Okay, so, okay, I interrupted your motion, but I was looking at your-
Let's just replace the 32,000.
I got it. And you made the motion correctly. Do I have a second, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Motion from Councilmember Sousa, a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. So, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 7-0. Okay, RNS have been removed from the agenda. We're now down to report on the items that are derived from this evening's discussions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have four and possibly a fifth item. Number one was on 9B is to hire an outside consultant or outside attorney to look at the issues you discussed tonight. Number two, bring back the contract on August 28th. The third one is related to Lipsco in terms of quarterly status report regarding the absorption rate, meaning the flow capacities and the plant's ability to operate. The next one, the city will get assurance from Lipsco that it has a capacity to handle the anticipated inflows from the area that we entered into the agreement for. And the last one was, an observation made that the city center should be part of the council base discussion.
I didn't know that was up for discussion.
It was just an observation that we picked up on and whether or not you wanted that added to the list.
I didn't know we had a list, I guess.
This list right here.
No, a list on, what will be the agenda for this retreat?
I was about to see IP.
Does everybody agree with hiring the outside attorney? Is that something you think is necessary?
I was emotional, wasn't I?
Well, I'll go by the advice of our attorney, the city's attorney, I think that's the right. It's whatever he thinks best.
Well, it seemed that everyone felt that the issue should be looked into, and I think the motion was to allow time for the issue to be looked into. So I stated, I don't believe I can do it as your attorney, so I suggested hiring outside counsel. I have in my budget a line item for outside counsel, so I could utilize that line item for that purpose.
Okay, any other discussion on the other four items? Okay, then I guess this meeting is adjourned.